April eighteenth, meeting of the select board. Uh, roll call vote, John Round.
Here.
Brian Solacy.
Here.
Kathy Blata here and Harris here. First off, we have public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there any public comment today on items not on the agenda? Okay, no hands, so we will move on to the chairman's report and action items. Uh, first for the chairman's report, I do want to let every, uh, the select board members know that, um, Debbie has put a calendar on.
SharePoint.
SharePoint, so you may now go in and enter your own dates of being away. So that'll be.
Quite a risk knowing how to use SharePoint.
A little bit, but not mine, Brian. It's, we, we can do a little primer on that. Uh, but.
Is it in the select board folder?
Okay.
Well, there are two, there's one with a little red and another with a blue, go to the blue. He's right founded, um, and. We didn't forward everybody to emails, um, regarding. One is, uh, um, for Officer Mullins, who's going to be graduating. And the other is regarding a housing forum, and I'm not able to attend either of those, so, um, I think the housing forum would actually be quite interesting.
I'm not sure, I got one on Officer Mullins, when was the one?
Uh, same time, I said not together, but I did send them, otherwise I will send them along again.
I got the Officer Mullins one, I did not.
It, it came from Seth Moulton's office. Anyway, I can, I can send that again, but we don't. Okay, so going over the action items, we have, um, the. We're not going to talk about the TA report right now, the discussion of staffing changes and land use departments, we will move that to May. Uh, preferably the first meeting in May, Greg.
Yes.
Okay, so May one. Next up, we have Water Resource Protection Task Force update, which we'll be getting today.
And I will text, uh, I'll text Steve for the appropriate time.
Cause they have a meeting tonight.
Yes, so he has to get pulled away from that.
Okay, wonderful, and Chuck, and I believe Nate will be on that as well. Um, Brian, um, any updates on the proposed Human Rights and Inclusion Committee?
Uh, nothing, we're still waiting on the governance, uh, uh, ultimate, uh, decisions or how we're gonna proceed at this point.
Okay, so we should move that to which meeting? Because we are doing governance, some governance is at this evening. Um, why don't we tentatively move that to May one, and we'll see if we have enough information at that point. Select Board Goals Governance Project, we have Susan Beckman here, so we'll be going over that as well. Policies are doing, we're going to that on May one, then Western Woods Discussion will be May fifteenth. And, uh, facility master plan, that's later on this year, so.
All right, things I think might be missing, uh, we're still missing the. The schedule, the performance reviews, the quarterly performance reviews. I really don't want to be the watchdog on that, uh, they don't, they don't happen unless I remind us, and I would like to not.
I'm sorry.
Have to be, the, the quarterly performance reviews for Todd and for yourself. We're contractually obligated to do them for Todd, and, and, um, I just.
We, we do those, and it's not, you know, that's not your sole responsibility.
Right, it's not.
It should be on the action item list, all right, Debbie, if you would add that one, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, and then to that, we should also have, um, fire sheets on that as well. So, okay, any other updates or information that, um, members want to?
Were there actions from the Joint Finance Committee meeting that are not on this list? I didn't have time to review my notes from the Joint Finance Committee meeting, but we certainly had a lot of discussion, and I thought we took some actions and, um, Greg, uh, um.
Okay, we have those.
Yeah, I think we need to ask you to review those notes and add the appropriate actions to the action meetings.
Okay, so we're adding the performance reviews, and that should be three separate ones, since we have three different staff for that, and then we want the joint FinCom, um, meeting as well. All right, Debbie?
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, then first up, we have, and this is very exciting, um, Kitty Weaver. Uh, and Kitty, would you go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us about, um, the event? The recognition and event, please.
Kitty Weaver, twenty-sixth Bridge Street, as they say, uh, meeting. Um, I'm here because I think Debbie sent out a little view, a blurb about the Navajo group, small dance group that's coming here on the eighteenth of May. Um, the reason they're coming here, um, I'm, can I assume that all of you have read what Debbie said? So I don't have to go into too much of the history background, um. There were two men who signed the Navajo Treaty in eighteen sixty-eight. Um, General, General Sherman of Civil War fame, um, Ohio, and Samuel Tappan of Manchester by the sea. Um, the Navajo Treaty, uh, was June first, eighteen sixty-eight. And today, they still celebrate Treaty Day. June first for them is like our July fourth. It brought them, they had been removed from their, like, homelands, they were taken on the long walk, you may have heard of that. Cherokee's had the Trail of Tears, the Navajos had the Long Walk. They were driven three to four hundred miles into terrible land in eastern New Mexico. They were imprisoned there for four years, it was a treaty that sent them home. This is the only treaty of the three hundred and seventy-five treaties that were signed by the government that actually sent a tribe back to their homelands. So the treaty and the men who signed them are revered. And this young group who is coming here, they want to bless Tappan's house because of that signing. They have also blessed Sherman's house already, they were there in Lancaster, Ohio. Population forty thousand, we know what our population is here, a little different. Um, but I hope we can welcome them here with open arms. They will be dancing at the Cole Chapel at six thirty, starting. It's a different venue for them, if any of you know. And if you've been down the basement of Roque Chapel, that they're gonna have to change their clothes, they're not old costumes, they are traditional dress. They're gonna have to change down there, come up and go down that long aisle and then perform. So anyway, I'm hoping everybody can be there, and it's traditional at the ends of these programs to have an exchange of gifts. So I'm hoping from Manchester that we can have some sort of certificate thanking them from coming all this way. They're making a very big move to come all this way to the East Coast, they've never been here before, they've never seen the ocean. They're gonna be here for a couple of days. They will also, after they're gonna be with us, they're going down to Cape Ann Museum, they'll be down there on Friday for two performances, one at eleven and one at one. So I'm hoping, but with a certificate from us and little gifts, Debbie, you said a little something that's our representative of this area, we can give to them. They may be giving us something, we will give them something. But I'm also hoping that one of you lovely folks here can make the presentation to them at the end of the program. I will leave that up to you, I'm gonna be emcee, for lack of anybody else being emcee. Um, but I think it's gonna be interesting evening, and I thank you for your time, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you very much, I, I think this is, uh, very exciting and quite an honor for our town. Um, and one, which I'm looking forward to.
I hope so.
And do you, do you know, um, or is there any guidance on what is, um, appropriate in terms of gift exchange?
Well, I know they give something usually very, uh, simple. Something that's representative of their Navajo Nation, whether it's feathers or something that's representative of them. And so it's the same kind of exchange from us. Although this may change, they were just at Sherman's House. And I'm not sure what they gave there, I've been in touch with the director of the museum there. Um, so it's, it's something simple, something not
Mm-hmm.
elaborate.
And how many, um, how many people will be coming from the Navajo Nation?
And we'd like to mention that, I thought it was gonna be six, it's a small group, it's actually gonna be five. There'll be the director and four dancers.
And do they have accommodations?
They have accommodations through moi. I work with, uh, Cape Ann Museum, Miranda Aisling down there, and they are gonna be staying at the Bishop Hotel in Gloucester. And so there'll be two nights coming here, they'll be here Wednesday night and Thursday, to perform Thursday, and then they go down there on Friday.
Okay.
So they'll be staying in a hotel. Um, because of Lancaster, Ohio being forty thousand, they have chain motel, so they stayed at a Holiday Inn in Lancaster. We don't have any Holiday Inns here, so we have a little more mom and pop motels, which I think they are, they're going to enjoy. They're a young group, the dancers are teenagers, and the director's in his early forties. That he's gonna give a more elaborate, uh, lecture at Cape Ann, he's gonna use a PowerPoint there. I was discouraging a PowerPoint here at Crowe Chapel, I wasn't sure that it was. He's gonna do a simpler program here on his lecture, and then the dancers will come after that. The whole program should be about an hour and a half, with no break, unless we all stand up and stretch, I don't know.
Okay. All right, so will this be, um, in the cricket as well?
Yes, uh, I hope Erica's gonna put something in, the, um, the library has picked up on this and is co, is partnering. Uh, they're putting everything out on their websites, the Park and Rex, Parks and Rec is putting, uh, two thousand things are gonna go out to them, hopefully Erica's gonna put an article in. Uh, seating is limited, so you do have to register through the library. Um, so hopefully we'll have a crowd.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kitty, any other, um, comments, questions from the board? John?
No.
Right.
Forward to it.
John knows about this.
Yes, I do.
Not about it for a while, through different venues.
I assume the waterfront mansion is kind of like, as far as the gift, gifting them.
No, just to say, I will be out of town, those, I am so sorry to miss it, but I, I hope they enjoy their time here.
I don't know if there's gonna be a video of this, I've not asked the question, some of this is so spiritual for them that they do not want any cameras.
Okay.
But, um, I have a feeling that at Cole Chapel, they will, um, some of it will be if people able to take pictures, and I haven't inquired about video. They will be using, the Sean Price, the director, will be using a microphone, although I'm told at Cole the acoustics are so good that you don't necessarily need anything. So we'll see what happens, but I've got somebody lined up.
One, thank you for putting this together, and, um, maybe you might think about, um, giving them one of the histories of Manchester that's still in print, that the historic. One of those, and there were a couple of suggestions.
Of course, there's very little written about indigenous folks here in town, so the history of Manchester starts out with, you know.
Yeah, right.
Laura Nella coming in the harbor, yes.
Yeah.
No harbor, but, um, but.
There may be a touch on Tappan and, and. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, looking forward to it. Okay, um, next up, we have interviews for, thank you again, Kitty. Um, for historical district, then Historic District Commission, we have Allison Moreland and Paul Strumpel. Okay, Allison. Like to tell us a little bit about why you, um, are interested, we did receive your, um, the application you submitted.
Great, thank you, so I have lived in Manchester, I guess for almost ten years now, and I have been sort of eager to get involved, to figure out how I might use my skills and free time to help support the place that I find um, so joyous to live in. And so whenever I saw that this, um, became available, that there were a couple spots open, I thought, what better way? I am myself very interested in preserving my own property and what that looks like, um, to stay true to sort of what drew us to this area, and so it feels like a sort of foot in the door for uh, sort of volunteering, giving back to the town.
Wonderful, thank you. John?
Great, yeah. Great, thanks for volunteering, Allison, and, uh, this, this committee, which I am a member also, as you know. And it's very tough to fill slots there because there are so many requirements, you meet one of them, you live in the Historic District, so. So I'm, I'm just curious, is there anything particular in the Historic District that you're looking at, that you say, you know, I'd like to work on this or work on that? Right now, lived there ten years, so you've got some perspective.
And in regard to, hmm, ooh, this is tricky, I don't know, I feel like this might get political, but I. Specific aesthetics in the Historic District, that aside, I'm really interested in the functionality of the village area of town, I am a pedestrian with two dogs and also a cyclist. And so I'm really interested to see how Manchester keeps what makes it so special, but evolves to meet the needs of where I feel like we need to go as a town in the world. Um, thinking about, we're going to need to become less reliant on cars. I'm lucky to work in town as well, so getting to work is easy for me, where I don't need a car. Um, but I'm eager to see that, like how we can keep it quaint, small, but make it more safe for folks to not be so reliant on cars, would be like the top thing, not, but it's not necessarily sort of within the bounds at the Historic District, since you know that, but that's my answer.
Tough when you're dealing with historic norms.
Yeah, but I think it's important to have that balance, right, innovation with tradition. Great.
Thank you for your comments, good, and for volunteering.
Mine?
Sounds good, thanks.
Kathy?
That was the exact question I was gonna ask. Um, just, um, given your interest stated interest, you also might fall into a bike and ped committee meeting. So those may be other.
Um, and there are overlaps with those, obviously, so, um, Anne?
Oh, no, I've. Enthusiasm and knowledge of the district kind of cover what I'm interested in. I assume you have enough time for the meetings and, and whatever research and background work has to be done?
Definitely, yeah, I work at Kirkwood, so I have, I have a very balanced life in regard to demand there and.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and questions I would have asked have been asked and answered, so thank you. Um, let's see. We have one more applicant, and that is Paul Strumpel, who we see is Paul here? Paul, are you attending via Zoom? I don't see him either. Something may have come up, so, um.
How many, um, slot, uh, empty positions are there?
With the resignation of Don Hallgren, that leaves, I thought it was two, but I got something that said.
Yeah, I'm not aware of three.
I thought it was two with this, so.
Two plus, Don.
No.
No.
I actually have that.
Yeah, I was looking at that, yeah, online. Typically, we, if we have more people applying, then openings, um, sometimes we'll wait, however.
I move that we approve the nomination of Allison Moreland to the Historic District Commission.
I second that.
Uh, may I ask for a friendly amendment of the term?
So, so it's a vacancy that expires this, I mean, June, so you could do it for three years from this June. We're close enough to that date.
So it's starting now.
So, so it'll be starting now through twenty-six.
Okay, would you accept that friendly amendment?
Twenty-six.
John?
Yes.
Moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by John Round, friendly amendment by Becky, and roll call vote. Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Blata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes, Allison, thank you very much. The pro volunteer. Thank you. You as well.
Uh, this FYI, when we collected information from the town committees, the head of the Historical Commission said there was one vacancy at that time, so if there's a new resignation, then it would make.
Exactly, exactly, and that's what I may have noted, so, um, Debbie, could we reach out to Paul, would you be able, and, and just see if.
He said he was gonna be here, but.
Well, things happen.
Yeah.
Okay, and if he hops on later, we can come back to this. Okay, next up, we have, um, LGBTQ plus progress flag raising in June. Oh, no, no, maybe hope I could see button courts. Almost a lifelong resident of Manchester, um, so the multi-cloak will even this evening, clearly. So I'm here to ask Manchester to join Hamilton, Women, Boxbury, Coxville, Middleton, Beverly, Salem, Tivity, Danvers, Newburyport, Marblehead, Amesbury, and Lynn uh, of North Shore towns that I know of, they're having a progress flag raising in June to celebrate LGBTQ plus month. Um, I'm the honored founder and president of North Shore Pride, we've been in existence for twelve years. And every year, we celebrate a culmination of prides now, um, in June. And so as a Manchester resident, I'm here, uh, asking, uh, for permission to fly the progress flag, which includes the unitex symbol, which is an all-inclusive progress. Um, not only on the town flag pole, uh, which we designate as the town flag pole, as far as I know. We haven't changed that in front of town hall. I've also asked this here, if we could please, as we do, uh, I believe for the month of July, uh, flag, uh, fly the progress flag on the nineteen poles that are on the harbor railing. As we do fly the American flag during the month of July. Uh, that is my request. Um, I will provide all of the flags at my financial cost, and I appreciate your consideration. Answer any question. Thank you very much.
Hope, um, Anne? I would like to make a motion that's related but not directly on this request, which is that we proclaim, um, the month of June to be LGBTQ months in Manchester, and that we prepare proclamation uh, to be presented on the first of June.
Thank you.
Now I have a second.
Second.
Okay, um, roll call vote?
Yes.
Anne Harrison, Kathy Blata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes, it's unanimous, thank you. Um, so related to the flag raising in June, and we have happily and proudly done this. Why so?
Thank you so much. We didn't do it during COVID.
We didn't do much of anything during COVID, so, okay, um, any questions for Hope regarding the flag raising? Anne?
I, I have no problem whatsoever with the flag raising, um. I, um, the, the polls, um, on Beach Street, there are nineteen, in recognition of the nineteen uh, Manchester residents who gave their lives in America, in, in war since World War One. And that's a pretty heavy piece of symbolism to take over for another cause, and I so I am uneasy about, uncomfortable about doing that. Um, I hope you get flags up all over town, but I'm not sure that that's the right place.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly, um, so I'm sorry, through the, through the chair.
Thank you.
Um, what I'd like to do first, Hope?
Yes.
Go ahead and go through the rest of the.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I also support raising, um, the flag in June. Um, I share Anne's concern about the Beach Street location, because I, I I thought there was a connection between the proclamation, which is for June, and the flag raising. And if the idea was to have flags in July along Beach, I'm, I'm, so I thought there was gonna be a discussion on, on a flag policy at some point. And I don't think we've had that discussion, and I personally would rather have that discussion before we pick a new location for, uh, a flag. I'm totally fine with the, the one in the town hall, just like it was last year. Feel like there was some unfinished business on each flag placement. Brian?
No. Uh, as, and I, um, yes, the flag will establish that, we've done that, I'm reluctant, uh, actually, more than reluctant, I just don't see anything other than the American flag on those, the nineteen there, that becomes, uh, once we open that door, okay? Any other special interests that's going to be looking to do something the same, not just assume, keep the flags where they are. If it represents something that's special to the town.
John?
Yeah, no, I'm all in favor of the flag on the flag pole out front, we had a debate on that, I guess, a couple of years or so ago, and I think that's kind of settled at this, at this point, yeah, the nineteen flags, there is already a symbolism that's associated with the World War One veterans. And I think that that's, that's the way that focus should be. Uh, bringing that up as a topic, uh, lends us to, or leads us to the fact that we probably need to broaden our flag discussion and policy going forward, because that really dealt with, uh, flags in the public space in, in town halls in general, and now you're starting to say, well, what about other, other places in town? I don't think we had that on that flag discussion agenda, we will now.
Okay, and, and I agree as well, I think that, um, the town hall is uh, or the town flag is where we fly flags in addition to the American flag, when we have proclamations of recognition. Um, I too am reluctant to go to other locations at this point in time, so I would like to add um, the flag policy as well to action items. Uh, and, and nail that one down, I know we've had a hiatus on policies. Um, but.
Something about the budget.
Always and ever, okay, um, so with that said, we do seem all in agreement, Hope? What would you like to say?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, and being a veteran, I, I very much, an active duty veteran, I very much appreciate that. Um, my question was, um, those flags seem to be flown from Memorial Day, which is understandable all the way through to July, so I, I'm not sure what the commemoration is in July, other than the Fourth of July. So that was my point of clarification and why the ask was made, uh, because I certainly understand the meaning of the nineteen uh, poles and the flags and respect them, um, honestly and respectfully. Uh, but my question was, the length of time in which they are flown, are they flown in commemoration of, uh, that event for the Memorial Day period, or are they just flown then continue to be flown just for the month of July for, to celebrate Fourth of July?
We're going to get that answer.
Okay, great, okay, thank you, well, if anything, I spearheaded conversation.
Absolutely.
Can I just clarify, though, that we are at the town official flag pole?
Absolutely.
The honor roll, where my name is, that's the flag pole.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And that won't change vis a vis your policy amendments.
Okay.
And now I'll let you.
Oh, oh, if I may.
Absolutely.
Among the things that gets discussed when we're talking about flags is the possibility of having a second flag pole on the, on the town common. So I cannot, we cannot promise that it will always be the current poll.
But for this year?
But for this year, it's absolutely be that.
Oh, no, I understand.
And, and.
We talked about that last year.
We did. We did. And, uh, it's, so that's something we can discuss as well. I am very strongly in favor of one flag pole for our town, but I am one person of five.
Can I make a clarifying point? Um, again, being a, a veteran? Will the, uh, POW flags fly below? Will the United States flag fly above as the, um, the, I think last year they had requested the, the Bruce High School American Legion had requested.
Um. I think we do it the same way as we did last year, with the American POW and then.
That's the order.
Yep.
That's the typical order, although I've seen it fly, flown, American, uh, whatever, fly, and then the POW flag. But as a veteran, I prefer American POW and then the the progress.
I think so. So, Hope, thank you very much.
Thank you, Hope, for bringing us.
Oh, yeah, we should talk about the vote.
Oh, yes, yes.
I will.
Don't go anywhere.
I move that we raise the progress flag on the flag pole on, on the town common, starting June first and running for the whole month of June.
Second.
Moved by Ann Harrison, second by Kathy Blata, roll call vote. Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Blata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. It's unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the proclamation.
And thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you as well. Um, ladies, I'm just going to ask that if you have conversations, if you could just step outside because the whispering can, can make it hard. No, it's A-OK, but it just does make it hard.
Particularly for people at home.
At home, exactly. That's mostly, yes. So, okay, uh, governance project update. We are ahead of schedule, so we will wait on that. And can we go to? Um. How about liaison updates? Um. And I do have or actually Board of Health Bike Ped, Council on Aging and Harbor Advisory, however. Uh, John Round, do you want to start?
Well, I mean, the water thing will be coming up because we're kind of out of order here a little bit, but so that's the only thing that's really on the, for me.
Okay, Brian, Parks and Rec Library?
Uh, Parks and Rec, uh, a couple of things. Um. The field is moving right along over Pine Street, and, um, if there were times when you just won't see any action going on, every time they remove some dirt, they have to send it out to have it tested.
Oh, good to know.
Um, and then, but the plan right now, the goal is to be complete by the end of June. That's on, yeah.
Do you know how long the testing takes?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Okay. But again, I think, uh, those timeframes were factored in when they give us the, the, uh, the June thirtieth, uh, target date. Um. As far as, uh, the pickleball courts, that's still, uh, a lot going on over there.
Okay.
There's still, uh, some issues that we're trying to resolve. The, uh, uh, I know that Cheryl is still looking into all kinds of, uh, sound attenuation process, uh, products. Uh. And, uh, that's an ongoing process. There has been discussion as to actually setting actual, as opposed to, uh, sundown. It's actually setting at time, because my perception of sundown is someone else's different perception.
Right.
Okay. Uh, so I believe that the next meeting, they're gonna to, to vote on that and just set it eight to eight. Uh, and now we got. And then finally, I'm on this, and, oh, okay.
Okay.
And Deb, I don't know if this is appropriate, uh, at the, uh, right after the, uh, agenda came out on Thursday, and then the town hall was closed on Friday, just throw this out here, members of Manchester Essex Little League have asked if they could put signage uh, on the, uh, the fencing out at Sweet Park. I know that probably has to be, uh, I think we have to do that.
Then I have to go on.
But I told them that I would bring that up, and so hopefully we get down to the next month, or next, next meeting.
Okay.
It's procedural, I guess, at this point.
So Little League signage goes on the next one. Thank you. Kathy Blata?
Um, well, we're gonna be discussing a lot of planning board activity tonight, so I think we'll cover most of it. The only thing I would mention is they did hold a public hearing on their proposed rules and, and regs that, uh, Betsy Ware had, um, drafted, and that hearing has been continued until April twenty-fourth. Um, are you gonna cover council on aging? John and I had attended the, the board of directors meeting on that. You're gonna go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Okay, Ann Harrison?
Um. Not much has happened on the school, on the school project, um, since um, we had several meetings. And, um. They, they don't meet again till early May. This, this school, school committee.
Okay, so, um, they're waiting to hear what Essex has to say. And CONCON is coming in, either with, what are we saying?
And the, the, the CONCON has been doing, that I've been following, they've been doing nothing having to do with, um, policies. They're just, they're, they're handling the cases, um, as expeditiously as possible under the circumstances. And it seems like to me that's doing its job widely and happily. Please, we have.
That's good to hear. Very good to hear.
Unusual.
Okay, um, then, uh, regarding, uh, Board of Health, they're meeting this Thursday evening. I'll be attending that. Um, Council on Aging as the liaison there, I'm not able to make the other meeting, but John and Kathy went, and I do have notes from that. So they had, um, number of areas of concern, probably the, uh, biggest one is not letting the senior center fall by the wayside. Um, so I, I would like to, um, see if we can have an update or discuss that at the next meeting, which is going to be a nice long meeting, but, um, I, I think we need to get back to that. It's sort of took, took a break while we were focusing on other things. So that's very foremost in, uh, on their minds. Additionally, they also hope to be approved soon for the two vans, uh, twelve-seater and nine-seater, so they can get those ordered for use by late twenty-three or early twenty-two. Uh, June fourteenth is World Elder Abuse Day, and, uh, at ten-thirty to eleven-thirty on the town hall green, there will be, um, a rally, um, just to, to raise awareness of that. Um. Additionally, the annual appeal for the, um, Friends of Council on Aging um, is in full swing twenty-twenty-three. As it stands now, they've raised little over seventeen thousand. So, uh, if anybody wants somewhere to park some money, go ahead and reach out to the Friends on Council on Aging. Um, Monday, they have their coffee and conversation corners, which John has been attending, and that regulars, regularly, he seems to bring twenty to thirty people, which is
Mm-hmm.
really nice and, uh, very much enjoy. So that is COA. The other meeting, um, I did attend a bike ped meeting, uh, and they have quite a heavy, um, agenda. And there, I think one of the focuses is a new law the state has put in, which is a Vulnerable Users Bill. And that's definitely going to come into play in terms of, um, safe routes, um, accessing bike lanes, um, and, and how Bike Ped, Downtown Improvement, DPW, um, the H Historic District Committee, there will be a lot of overlap on that. Um. Next, Harbor Advisory, Harbor Advisory met, and uh, they are focusing on getting cost estimates. They're looking to for tax point at this time, and they're not sure yet if the rotunda will be usable or not this year. So they're yeah, I know, looking at that, um, grudging, we still need money for engineering and permitting on that. Um. The Fisherman's Facility is being looked at, uh, and that's going to come in with rotunda estimates as well. Um, and they want to go ahead and finalize the Harbor Management Plan Ruth. They felt that the Chair of Harbor Advisory Committee should be, um, the Chair, also the Chair of the Harbor Management Plan. Uh, so there we go. Those four, and that brings us to we have a few more minutes.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
There, there, there are two rotunda projects, I believe. One is after the damage from the storm this winter, which has the ramp, the, the wooden part of the pier has lifted. So that's what may keep the rotunda unusable this.
Right. Yes.
And they're, so they're waiting for, not the, the cost estimate for the Fisherman's Pier, is that tied with the rotunda moving on, or, or moving out, staying foot, moving ashore? So the, the fishermen are waiting for the longer estimate, and the rest of us are waiting.
Yes, we're waiting.
So. That yellow thingy gets really tired. Okay, understood. Um, something, a question that came up about the Harbor Management was whether that committee ought to include someone from the yacht club.
That does make sense.
Um, BIA had suggested to me that, that someone contact the yacht club and ask if they would like to have their club captain involved in that, because there's certainly a heavy, heavy harbor user. I don't know how that would happen.
If we opened that up to the yacht club?
The boat club already has a member on board.
But I'm thinking about, um, the businesses as well.
Well, we've been looking for businesses.
Any thoughts? Actually, no, we'll put that on an agenda. That will have to go on the, the discussion. Um, and of May one sound? Let's see. Should we go to May fifteenth on that one?
Sure.
Okay, so.
I'm sure it's a good old, uh, question. As the group is starting, I think you may have already answered this. Have they started? And, uh, uh, the, no, so, oh, waiting to, to set the Harvard plan? So I put this, we're losing another, another month as far as, uh, I just wanted to clarify that.
Or it can be started, and if, if it's felt that, um, Manchester Yacht Club should have representation, they can join later, join in and get a, a catch-up.
Same, the consultant would provide some input on that, right?
Right. There, I mean, there can be different levels of participation. There is usually a core team, and then there may be other interested parties which may wanna participate in some sort of review process.
Okay, that brings us back to Governance Project Update. Hello, Susan.
Um, can I ask this? Driving the slides.
You will. I'd like to sit, but I would say one thing we got out of the last meeting is, um, if you could face the screen more than us, then you're more, uh, it's better, easier for them, audience to hear.
Well, I can see them so deeply do that. Okay, well, thank you very much for having me back. Um, this update really is tied to, I'm just quickly walking through what we've done over the last couple of months on our Board and Committee inventory. And as you can see, it's been pretty hefty, January, March, April, and now we're on the eighteenth. Um, we've done, we updated you initially on the select board in terms of what we were doing. Um, planned the survey, had the department meetings and inventories, shared that information back with department heads and committee chairman and chairwomen. Um, and now tonight is our select board update, so thanks a lot. So far from the Governance Project, just again, to put it in context, the master plan put forward a couple of alternative, a couple of goals for the master plan relative to the select board. And that's aligning master plan implementation with committee board and all of the department work. As we know, we have a lot of committees and a lot of department people that work together. Sometimes they're silent, sometimes they're integrated. The goal of this is to align them. And secondly, to really start fostering cohesion. We had a great example of that, just talking about the Harbor Committee and understanding who needs to be on what, and with Parks and Rec and all those others, there's a lot of inter connection between these committees, so we wanted to be able to foster that. So far, um, we have shared the results, as I said, with the board and departments who are here tonight. The goal tonight is to prioritize next steps.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, this is just a visual of where we stand right now relative to this. So, again, um, the thing that was really important, and I think that I was interested in, the common themes, as you'll see in a minute, are very consistent between the boards, committees, and the department heads, which is actually encouraging, I think, because you wanna make sure that we're clear on that. And you'll see as the recommendations come forward, the implementation is short, in the short meeting and long-term piece, I think. So the Board and Committee feedback really came around these sort of top four or five pieces. Communication improvements are really important. We talked a little bit right before this meeting started, uh, where I came up around the publishing of the liaison list, the importance of understanding who is doing the liaison work, what they're doing, what are the roles and responsibilities around that. Boards and departments don't necessarily know what each other's liaisons are doing, so the construct is, let's get that published, let's make it understood, and then we can make that work. Um, there's also, um, updating Board and Committee handbooks that are done every year. They're really, really good. Some boards and committees didn't realize that they were available, so that's one of the things that we need to make sure that people get the training on those. Um, I think the most important piece here is the contract around boards and committees do a lot of work. Um, they work sometimes insular in the stuff that they need to do, but they also put forward a lot of good work that is not necessarily connected to departments or connected to the work of the master plan or to the things that we need to do. The goal here is to try to understand how to move work forward. So if you have a parking study, you have that put forward, how do you bring that to, back to the select board, and how does it get implemented? How is that done through a different light, like different layers of work, so that people can actually connect the work that they're doing to getting some results implemented? Um, and then just the basic idea of additional mini, uh, meetings with committee chairs and communication and all of that. There's also was some good discussion around, uh, committee structure. And, you know, can we do more with working groups? Are there other things that can be done relative to that? And to really understand if we had a resource group or a project team, are there opportunities for that? We run into a meeting one, have to understand those pieces of it, but are there ways that we can look at that? Um, hybrid meetings, we need to make sure that everyone is trained on doing these meetings well. And the website, which is probably the last large piece of this, which also ties into technology, making it easier for people to fill out applications, but also to navigate and get the information they need. And there were a couple of specific, uh, wish lists in terms of inspections for real estate transfers, building department staff, expanding those long. And, um, starting the budget process earlier, which I And I'm starting the budget process earlier, which I think you began kicking off last week, which was actually great in the look back going forward. So those are some of the feedback that we heard from the departments and the chairs. Okay. Great. Recommendations. So these really fall into the three categories of short, medium and long term over the next thirty days. Recommending setting an annual date for department board and committee meetings to review their work of the year past. Report for setting goals and priorities for the next fiscal year, starting in June. So the thought process would be each June, there'd be a one man meeting where all the committee chairs, department heads. And people get together and the boards and come up with, here's the stuff that we're all working on. So there's a connection on that. Um, make sure that there are updates quarterly from each of the boards and committees so that we know how things are going over the year. It's great to set goals and go forward with them, but if you're not checking in to understand what they look like, it doesn't necessarily make sense. Um, taking the liaison program to another level, which is really formalizing it a little bit in terms of what committees get liaisons. This isn't meant to be more work, but the construct is, is that they will be consistent. When you attend a liaison and you're a liaison for meeting, here's the basic things you report out on, here's the way, what's the way you need to do it. And then finally, a um annual volunteer appreciation event was something that we suggested. In the beginning of June. So those are sort of the short term pieces that we have.
Here's just one thing, um, we kind of skipped the room with the discussion on the minutes.
Oh, sorry, probably on purpose.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's funny because we had a very long discussion about the minutes. So. There was, you know, the concept is, is that if you can do minutes early and get them up and running, people would really appreciate that. So when we presented this to the boards and committees, their concern was five days is a short period of time. Is it something, do we want to put draft minutes up? How do we want to look at that? And I think we're talking about the prospect of how that may be able to work in different ways. So. Taking a summary of action minutes at the front of a meeting and just taking an annotated version of the. Agenda to say, here's the topics we discussed, not necessarily sharing outcomes, but at least knowing what's been on the meeting and what was voted on. And then going following up with beings going forward.
Yeah, so we actually have, um, so I think the next step there is we need to come to. And clearly outline what the options are around minutes because it doesn't do us any good if minutes aren't posted for months, you know, the residents don't know what's going on. And in doing our research, we came upon some language in the open meeting law FAQs, which was very interesting that. Committees could choose the method, they could vote on how they approve the minutes. So for example, some committees could vote to have the um chair approve the minutes. Um, and you know, that's certainly probably not something you want to do for an elected board, but for many of our advisory committees, which are less formal. That might be just changing how they approve the minutes, might allow them to get more posted, uh, more posted faster. So we're looking at the different options and Diane is all over this. She's very concerned about, you know, how the process we use for, for posting minutes and so she's doing a little research for us.
Yeah, I'm also just going to say if anybody's phone is not muted, if you would mute it, please. That would be. Helpful if you can bring it.
Okay, thanks for the minutes. Yes, okay. So um, the, the next midterm focus is really now saying, um, looking at all the committees that we've got. Um, there are a lot of them out there. Is there an opportunity to retire some? Is there a opportunity to basically consolidate some? That could be a possibility for the next sixty and ninety days. Um, implement department board liaison programs, so actually take the program and implement it over the next month or so. Um, clarify the process for creating task force. If we're doing anything different on committees, just being clear about that. Um, how do we do committee project work? What is the process for that? You know, we talked about gating process where you identify a project, you take it to the board, you get their approval, you move forward and it's got different. Levels of focus on it as you go ahead. Um, inter-board committee department workflow and communication process, how these work between committees is important. Um, and then making sure that all the members have the handbooks. And then finally updating the website. So there's some pieces that can be done, just general cleaning up, removing inactive activity. Um, committees that are on there now, but also making sure that membership and all that information is correct and focused on. So those are sort of the interim pieces. All right, and the last one. Um, this constructive gating process for projects by advisory committees, so then you basically have an opportunity to work through. How the different workflow will happen and what the steps are along the way to approve the projects. Uh, integrate and streamline permitting process online. There's opportunities, our building process is pretty solid online right now, but are there other things that's wrapped around that that we can solidify a little bit better? Um, integrated public safety strategy, we talked about this before town meeting and, and some of the earlier recommendations that we had. Which is basically taking a look and saying, you know, the world is changing. How do we look at fire, police, harbor? What do we need to do around those things? Um, and then finally, um, looking at succession planning, which is important for all departments. And then technology use review and website update, a real hardcore look at that because I think. One of the topics that came up particularly around minutes, are there ways of using technology that might actually help us? Um, get minutes out quicker and have things be a little bit more. Uh, cohesive and coming forward. So that's sort of the mid-long. midterm and long-term goals and recommendations that we had. So the last piece is just to say, what do you think of those groups? What are the next steps? What are the priorities? What are you thinking about?
Thank you very much. Lot of work. And I would love to be able to see how something. Along these guy, these lines can actually be implemented in such a way that it's not reinvented. Every year. Um, comments, questions, Anne?
Um, we thought a lot about liaison and. Um. Should the planning board, for instance, have a liaison with the board of health? Um. And how are you going to? That means that everybody is going to be in a meeting every day, sometimes two or three at the same time.
Yeah, that's the reason why we're taking the time to look at this and to say what really makes sense. The construct isn't necessarily to say everybody gets a liaison, but we need to understand is how the different levels work. So planning board has a very strong connection with the public department of health, you know, how that works. So I think the answer short term is we don't know yet and we need to look at that and make sure that we allocate the right liaisons to the right groups.
So for example, one of the pieces of information we collected from all the boards and committees is who do you interact with? So we can see DPW is a real popular group, so we don't want them at every single meeting. We have to think of another way for them to get their information out and for to have the right dialogue where they're not in twenty meetings. Every week, right? Um, and then it's very interesting, we're, we're doing some cross-checking where one. Board said, oh, we need information from so and so, but that other board did not say they needed information from group one. So. We're doing that cross-checking right now, but it, I think the intent is to have deliberate liaisons where they will help move work forward. Or help communication, but everybody can't be a liaison to everybody else.
And in addition to that, though, what's what, um, along those lines, it's not just the liaisons or other groups who are. Drawing time away from other departments.
Right.
When you get, when you talk about mirrored emails every day, that's another. Draw on that. Department's time. Anne, I'm sorry, what did you want to say?
Um. The, the second thing. That I see among our boards and committees is that there are. Some that are land use, some that have judicial, quasi judiciary authority. And as we're setting up, for example, processes for minutes. I think we need to distinguish between those who are purely advisory and those who have the ability to affect. People's property.
Absolutely. And that was, that came up very strongly in our conversation that if you have a judiciary responsibility. Or anything like that, that those minutes need to be not necessarily somewhere, they need to be very specific. So.
Yeah.
There's going to be two levels.
I think. I want to be clear that when you're talking about the minutes for. Um. Say the Winsford Field Committee. That they could have an agenda. And then just notes on what votes were taken. Um. That, that they don't need to relay the whole discussion of everything. Um, but I, I. Maybe I just misheard you. I thought, I thought you said you didn't necessarily have to keep track of the decisions. You have to keep track of the decisions.
Yeah, yeah, I was talking about if you're doing a summary piece upfront, um, to get draft minutes put together, that was one of the options that we talked about was doing an action. Summary of a meeting after the fact. Um, but after talking to Diane and everyone else, the thought is that we probably don't want to do that. We're going to look at it a little differently, but. I think to your point, there's levels of committees that have different needs for minutes in terms of specificity and the need to put that forward. So that's part of this. Untangling is to figure out what we need to do.
And so once, and once we all agree on if there are any changes needed, right, to how we do the minutes. And I think the next step is also to hold the chairs accountable for getting the minutes published in a timely manner. Because we do have some groups which don't do it for months and months. Some have never published minutes, so. Um, we're doing a little investigation, you know, calling up the chairs. Um, what's, what's the problem here? And um, at some point, we may need to make a decision, either. You know, that committee doesn't need to exist, or perhaps it needs a different chair. But if you're going to have a, a committee that's representing the residents, the residents have a right to know what's going on. So.
And to that point, yeah. I'm just only what we need to miss to write a decision.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'll be getting a phone call with, with my decision. I haven't got the minutes yet. You know, and the integral component of the uh, the actual decision is being written, so it's still a bit better.
And in addition to those, but what. When we're looking at these um suggestions. We also have to bear in mind what master and law is. And so with that regarding minutes. And it's important that we not impose. Levels of specificity because that is not. In accordance with master and law and how minutes are. Well, at least according to the attorney general, that, that how, um, how minutes are. What is the word I'm looking? Say it again.
We don't know.
I know, well, you're supposed to know these things.
No, how minutes are. It's a complex law and I'll tell you, when I, when I had a conversation with Diane about it, she learned a few new things too, which was interesting. Um, so that's why I think we all have some habits, I'll say it that way, around minutes and some of our habits. They're not necessarily the only way to legally, you know, comply with the O M L. And that's what's interesting. If we can find a more efficient, faster way to get the information out to the residents. That, that's usually good for everybody. So Diane's doing a little research and then we're waiting for her to come back to us and, and just. Clarify some of the new information we found.
Um, and I didn't mean to take this down the minutes rabbit.
No, it's a big topic. It's very, it's time consuming. It's time consuming, but they're important.
And a lot of people do not understand, right? Yeah, I mean. And it can change when you think to do.
Yeah, so I want to go back to the liaison issue a little bit and I saw the grid that you put together with regard to which committees intersect, which, uh, which other committees. And I agree that if all people went to all meetings associated with their liaison responsibilities. Uh, everything a grind to a halt. It, it just could not happen. I think there are maybe a few committees where you need to be at some, if you're a liaison, you need to be at more than, other than fewer, but there are some a couple of times a year. Is enough. And I, I, you know, I would point the first finger at us. We're the only ones that intersect with every committee. And we've got assignments for what? Maybe eight or ten? Out of thirty?
So, so an example of that might be though. That if I'm the, let's say if I'm the liaison to Mike and Ted or at fourteen. One of the things I think that would be important would be for me to. Work with that committee to make sure their goals are aligned with what we need them to do as a select board, right? Their, their, their advisory, and if they're going off on their own thing, right? Don't we want some? Cooperation.
But I don't think that's up to. The liaison.
No, 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 that the liaison should represent the board, but if we sense that the committees are going, doing something else, okay.
I think the liaison gets information from meetings to bring back to the select board. Then if modifications need to be made or statements need to be made.
Yes.
It's discussed within the group before going back. I think that's really critical.
Well, I think that can tie into the minutes. There are some, some groups, maybe you want to be there. Every other meeting, every fourth, fifth meeting. If the minutes are there, you can look and say, oh, there's something going on here. I think I better go to the next meeting because. Uh, you know, I'm interested. In, in updating exactly what's, uh, what's happening here. So, but I think that we have to. Broaden our horizons here with regard to liaison responsibilities across the board. And, uh, and, and see how that evolves in terms of, um. Uh, the number of meetings that one has to go. It will increase, but it should not have the increase pretty much.
Susan, so I think if you go back to the short term slide, Greg, you know, like. The one way to begin to attack this is looking at the construct of doing this annual multi-departmental board committee meeting. If you imagine that every June you get together and set those goals, right?
Right.
And every quarter you update with those goals on. The need for the liaisons, other than on a very important, you know, tactical piece that you need to stay involved with, you know. Is very different and that will be covered by the process that we're trying to put forward here. So.
Right.
I think that's the goal to get to that.
Because some liaisons can simply be, you reach out to a chair or whomever's the note taker and say. Give, give me the synopsis.
Yeah, and I think what we found was really helpful. Getting everybody in the room is great. When you have the departments with the committees, with the boards, everybody's sharing their ideas. You really can find the common ground and what works best. So that's why I think having this multi-board meeting in June, it would be a good kickoff to start this. We can come forward with some. Ideas about in constructs that they can talk about. Um, and come prepared with their goals and how they could put those forward and then everybody can hear what's going on.
They asked for that. That was, that, that was very.
I think it's great. And I, I love the idea also of the liaison program. I think that's, that can be a critical component. So, um. Should we set? This meeting up, try to get this set up?
Well, so we're not taking. Uh, the, the quick, the point is, is that from the short term, first thirty days, that's what I'm looking at. Are these the topics that you would like to cover? If they are the topics that you'd like to cover, I can put forward the next round of discussion on this, which would be agenda for the meeting. How would it be set up, the timeframe, the kinds of topics? I think the liaison program will be developed as part of that meeting because we want to share the thoughts with everybody. So the implementation wouldn't necessarily happen until after that meeting, but we want to get the feedback for people on that. So that's the general thought.
Okay, um, I did have, what was the percentage? Do you have an idea of percentage of involvement from boards and committees? With uh, the, the meetings you had and then the surveys?
Oh, how did we, we had, um. How many responses we had?
Oh, we got everyone's.
But everyone's, yeah, everyone's.
Little bit of chasing, but not.
Yeah. From every boarding committee.
This response is on, yeah, from the survey.
Now, there are some, there are some committees mentioned on our website which actually don't exist, so that's part of our cleanup. So that is part of our. An easy just go do. Um, there are some things that need to be cleaned up.
And we did have, you know, our initial meeting, there were a lot of people that couldn't get there to the first one, but in the follow-up conversations, everybody was very interested in getting together in June. As long as we can give an advanced date, we got written. It is, and that's what's really important. It's getting that done, so. So we had good participation.
Yeah. One meeting, the meeting I was able to, we can really wonder if that was great.
I would think the, the other thing that was interesting was when we did, um, send the survey out. You know, like I said, there were some committee chairs who voluntarily came forth and said, you know, I'm not sure I need to. Our team needs to be a committee. There may be another construct that's better. So, um, we didn't want to get into a specific discussion on which committees. Um, uh, we may want to retire or reshape or refocus, but we're going back to those committee chairs and talking with them each individually. Um, to see if we can come forth with a more specific recommendation, but there are also some committees. But there are also some committees which have significant vacancies. And I think those are. Um, we just haven't directly connected with those chairs yet. So I didn't want to get into that discussion here. We want to talk to those people first. But there's probably a good half dozen in, in various shapes that we can retire, reshape.
Right, because there is a good deal of overlap as well and a lot of. Sort of repetitive reinventing because there is so much overlap.
And if we can agree on what a, um, what a committee should be, um, you know. I would say one thought is that, you know, we have town employees who get the job done. And committees, the non-elected boards, you know, they are designed to augment, right? What, and advise us, uh, but they're designed to augment the town, you know, employees. I would say that as we, we, we've created a lot of new task forces and stuff like that, just since I've been on, on the board. And we may want to um, think about naming conventions, which are a little bit. Clear on when committees, um, like for example, lately, we've been setting up task forces for defined projects. Which are going to end, right? There are some legacy committees which were originally set up. As defined in projects, but they're ongoing and have not yet retired. So those are the, the ones we're looking at first because in, if we rolled back the clock and started them. They probably would have been a task force which by now should have been retired. So um, just some of those.
I'm, I'm a little worried, a little uneasy about this very top-down organization. Of everybody should be working on what the Board of Selectmen says they should be working on. I think, and I, that's not far from. Because I think that there are a number of committees that come up with useful suggestions, ideas, projects that we hadn't thought about. And, and, and I would hate to have us lay out a schedule for the committee for the year. You will work on this. And, and lose.
I don't think that's what.
Well.
Well, that's not what I meant to say. Let me clarify. The discussion we had with the committees was, um, they recognize that they. Are working in silos in some cases and don't really want to. They, they know there's overlap. But if there is no communication around the goals and specifically timing, it's really hard. To share information and get work done collectively if there are no stated goals. And no stated timing on when people want to achieve those goals. So um. My, so that, that's step number one. It really is the communication outlining, you know, the goals. That they come up with, okay? With their timing, but we may need to get in there. Uh, because the, their wishful timing may not be aligned with the timing that we have set up as a board for other things in the town. Or it's just, it's not that we're trying to dictate, but there's coordination. Um, I just, it feels like chaos if everybody's off doing their own thing.
I think, I think the challenge here is. If you took everything here that we have put forward and all the great ideas and said, okay, we're gonna just, you know, spin the dice, this thing's gonna happen. Change is hard. Moving things is difficult. You need collaboration. You need everybody to work together to come up with the right answers. So the whole intent here is to start with communication and to begin having intercommittee meetings. So that we can sit down happy, because the ideas that we're coming up with. Could be completely off counter to what other people might find and we'll find a better answer. So I think it needs to be iterative. It needs to be collaborative and we need to bring everybody together to solve this. It's not top-down or bottom-up necessarily. It's coming together and building it out. Because people on committees have their, the reason that they're on a committee, particularly advisors, because they have a passion. And you want to capture that. That's the stuff you want to keep alive, you know, in the town and doing. So I think it is not meant to be dictatorial. It's not meant to be, you know, subscription, the way you do things. But more how we get people together and talk about things, because I think that's where we're finding the answer.
And of course, the school committee is entirely outside of all of this.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, but I, I heard what you heard uh, earlier, so.
Okay, so it's now eight forty, uh, seven forty-five. And um, what would you like?
Well, just consensus that, you know, yeah, this sounds, if there's anything else that you want. Uh, to go beyond in terms of what we presented. If not, I will take those first four or five goals for the next thirty days. And bring them up a little bit. Um, suggest an agenda for a June meeting for the interdepartmental teams and the um, boards and committees.
Do you have any feeling for when that meeting might be?
I, well, we have to see what, what people, ask people when it'll be available, when they're available. So I'm hoping mid-June before school ends.
Oh, okay. Sounds like a pretty big meeting. Where are we going to have it?
Well, that's all the stuff we have to figure out. So maybe a week. So, and we'll, we'll look at the details.
Yeah, and, and you want people who are, you want the employees. The department employees.
Department heads, committee chairs.
And lots of people who are on volunteer committees have full-time jobs as well.
Well, this, this has been to be a chair and department head meeting. It's not the.
Yes, I had, but even department, even chairs have.
Oh, I understand. Well, that's why we have to double check and see what we can do. The indication from everybody that responded, they were very interested in doing it. So I think it's a verity.
Yeah, maybe finding a piece of software that would let people signal what dates.
And so does that sound?
It's not, the one thing that I'm really concerned with going forward is that um. Especially in terms of communication and flow is just making sure there, that we are. Not violating any O M L and I know that would be first and foremost as well. But I just, every step that we do, um, I want to make sure that we're so. Regularly adhering to that.
So I guess Becky, you're a representative to this.
Yeah. Happily.
So, anyway, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Susan, very much. That was. Good information, a lot, yes. Okay, um, Rick, if you would like to offer something, I would love to have you go ahead and send an email on that. This is just the rule that we're not doing public comment on that right now. Um, okay, next up, we have Water Resource Protection Task Force. And just a reminder, any side conversations, do take those outside, Rick. Because if you all are chatting, then the people who are attending via Zoom can't really hear very well. Okay. Greg.
Steve there? I texted them about five or six minutes ago.
I was on the same meeting with uh, Steve, so he should be following right here.
Okay, I see Byon, we've got Byon, Chuck. And Steve. Good evening, Steve. You're muted? Greg, Steve says he can't unmute? Byon, are you able to? I know Chuck did. Yep, Byon can unmute.
I can unmute.
Okay, Steve, I'm not sure because other people are able to. Are you, are, are you on a, he's not on a phone. Did you hear that? Steve tried to log off and log back in, please?
Ah, there we go. Sorry about that. Good evening. Sorry to be a little late and to be fumbling fingers here.
All right, are you, um, do you need to share your screens, Steve?
Yes, I do. Hang on one second. I will get to that. Right here. Are we still uh? Dithering with this? There we go. With any luck, you, uh, you see the title page. Yes? Okay, so as you know, it, since early last year, the task force has been uh. Working pretty diligently, I would say, in uh, six subcommittees focused on different aspects of uh. A long-term strategy for water quantity and quality for drinking water. And I think we've covered a lot of ground. We've had uh, fully twenty members and alternates um. At least a majority attending every meeting, or meeting every three weeks. So I've been very pleased with the outpouring of energy, particularly that there's some. Folks associated with the task force who I, as far as I know, have not been involved much with, in other volunteer capacities. Anyway, I'm very grateful to them and, and uh, thank you for making all of this possible. One of the primary things we uh, we set out to do was to figure out how to. Make something that would uh, would last in terms of uh, recommendations that you accept and endorse and want to see implemented. Um, and not simply a, you know, another really solid report. That everyone agrees with that ends up, you know, in a short-term initiative or a, a. Privileged place on the bookshelf. So our first recommendation is, is uh. Exactly along those lines. And it is to create a water advisory board. You're welcome to change the name. I borrowed this from the town of Belmont. Which, similar to us, um, created a board in the absence of uh, separate water and sewer commissioners. To be responsible and accountable within town government preserve, for preserving quality and quantity of the drinking water. Uh, again, modeling on Belmont, you know, to keep it small, three volunteers to ensure implementation of. Things we recommend and you approve. We considered two options here. Uh, one was to have a small water advisory board. Appointed by you with staggered three-year terms, um, a small budget and some part-time staff support. And option B would be to delegate to an existing committee and we did a. Experiment to see if this could go to, for instance, Sustainability Committee, which already has. Officially responsibility for water conservation, although as they say, they, they've focused primarily on other aspects of sustainability in their. Work so far. And we concluded that it's important enough and uh, time-consuming enough that not only. Should not be something that you have sole responsibility for as select board. But it should be something that has a group of people dedicated and focused to. So that's the, that's the primary recommendation in process terms and governance terms. And I realize it, it needs to fit into the framework that you're working on with uh, Susan Beckman and others. Uh, to, to uh, clarify and make town government more efficient. The, the other recommendations and, and I'm happy to have some discussion about that now, although. I can also just blurt out these other recommendations and uh, let you chew on the whole matter, ask questions. The other recommendations are substantive and they fall under the headings of conserving drinking water. Which comes from our study of demand and usage. Uh, ensuring ample drinking water, which comes from supply and source studies. And improving quality of drinking, of the drinking water overall, which comes from variety of work, particularly the contaminations and water quality team. There's three primary recommendations under each. Uh, we would not, the water advisory board wouldn't take sole responsibility for any of these or most of these. Uh, would for some, actually, uh, but would, would be a uh. Um, a help, an assistance, uh, uh. Kind of hub for information and a, a conscience for keeping the process moving forward. So these nine are under conservation to first upgrade. Uh, and in most cases, replace our existing water meters for residential and commercial. And other customers. Uh, second, to change the water rates uh, with conservation in mind. And obviously, we have specific recommendations for each of these. Um, which I'd be happy to go into when we have more time. Uh, third would be to increase awareness and education around conservation. And two and three, actually, one, two and three work together nicely in uh, as a hat trick to uh. Apply better information. A set of carrots and sticks, if you will, to the idea that we should not be using so much drinking water to irrigate. Lawns and plants. Uh, which is one of our findings. Under ensuring supply, uh, the three recommendations are to help define the alternative next steps for the Lincoln Street well. Which is, I'm sure you're aware, include. Remediating the contamination, P-FAS contamination onsite at the, the well. Or uh, conveying the water somehow up to uh, the water treatment plant and centralizing P-FAS filtration up there. A third kind of dark horse candidate would be to uh, plan for retirement of Lincoln Street well. Um, if it is possible and um, to replace it with a cleaner source of water closer. To the existing water treatment plant. Uh, fifth would be to accelerate the replacement of our ancient water mains, uh, which you probably know as much about as we do. But to help build the financial case for that, particularly if uh, the water enterprise fund is uh. Shall we say more liquid after uh, recommendation two. Six would be to expedite repairs to the wastewater treatment plant's recycle water system, given Chuck's. Uh, astounding, kind of stunning finding that. Um, we are using last year, fully ten percent of our finished water. Um, in that process. Normally, we ask every citizen to process the water somehow or other before it goes to the wastewater treatment plant and then out to sea. But in this case, we're cutting out all the middlemen and uh, using the water directly at the treatment plant before it's sent out to sea. Under C, the quality. Uh, and you'll see, of course, there are some overlaps here. The Lincoln Street well, for instance, is both a quality and a quantity issue. As are the water mains, which are, the ancient ones are full of tuberculated. It's not a wonderful word. My new favorite word, tuberculated uh, uh, accumulations of minerals, which uh. uh, accumulations of, uh, minerals, which, uh, then leach back into the water. Anyway, under C would be monitoring wells for gravelly pond, which are already specked and, and budgeted um, and ready to go, sort of. Um, eight is to update our existing source water protections, uh, which can be primarily, I think, the overlay districts and zoning, although intimately connected with number nine, which is to start serious dialogue on watershed protection with Hamilton Essex and Wenham, given that we basically share the same north coastal basin, uh, in some respects. And, uh, our watershed in particular is very much, uh, in their hands in terms of source water protection, since most of the, uh, watershed is, is in, in their towns. So I, I also included, um, a little bit of detail on each of these, which I'll leave you to, uh, read or ask about on your own. And let me just conclude by saying we're doing a bunch of work to make as specific as possible, the steps and the timing and the budget implications of these recommendations. So this is just a, you know, very high level, 10,000-foot view of what it might look like, what, what step would we take first under each of those nine recommendations? How soon should we start? How long will it take really to execute in some meaningful way, the, the recommendation and what might it cost? The costs are in there in red if they're, uh, expenses and in black in the case of rates, where we expect there to be some, uh, some improvement in, uh, cash flow into the water enterprise fund. So for example, for meters, we have, uh, been working with Chuck and various vendors to spec out a pilot test, which could start in 60 days of, you know, a dozen or two dozen households to try out new meters, um, and from that to make a decision about, uh, how quickly and which technology, uh, to use. So within two years, we would have replacement at a cost, uh, at or under $1 million, et cetera, down that list. Well, you, you gave me 15 minutes and I, I don't want to abuse that, so I'm gonna stop here and invite your questions and, uh, comments.
Thank you very much, Steve. Um, Anne? Um, for more time to pitch.
No, I'm, I'm apparently printed out the wrong thing. Was this report, we got a, another.
This is revised.
We had a revised one this afternoon.
Yes, the, the one that begins corrected.
It, it was very, let me quiet a little bit about getting stuff that's this dense at, in the middle of the afternoon. I was at the dentist in the middle of the afternoon. Um, you know.
I'm truly sorry. Well, the good news is we're not asking you to make a decision tonight, although any feedback you have over the next few weeks about priorities among these things, about feasibility or fantasy of some of the financial implications, all of that would be helpful with the task force.
It is a lot to digest, um, but I would like to go along and Kathy?
Yeah, um, so very comprehensive. So thank you very much for that. Um, I share his frustration with the getting the density of the report at, at, uh, the 11th hour. Um, but I, I just, I guess I have a question. Um, because it is very comprehensive and it would seem to me, Greg, um, a lot of what's here is under the purview of the DPW, right? Okay, so given that, um, when I go back to the first recommendation on whether or not we need to create a water advisory board or not, I guess my inclination is that, you know, ba- based on my previous comment, committees are needed to fill gaps, right, in, in town governance. And if most of this is under the DPW, I'm wondering what very narrow, specific purpose some sort of committee would address. Um, I agree that, uh, you have a sustainability committee might be a great committee to take on the education component, conservation. I think that's right up their alley. Um, but other than that, I, I, I'm just not clear on anything on the list of implementation ideas that Chuck couldn't handle.
Well, Chuck, I mean, Chuck should answer this, but from my standpoint.
Chuck, if you're on, I, you know, so that would be my question, you know.
Just a quick, a quick answer, Kathy, to an excellent question. Uh, numbers one, four, five and six are clearly primarily DPW's responsibility. And we are simply proposing to do whatever we can to help out with the water, water meter pilot, for example, or fleshing out the, the longer-term consequences of the alternatives to the Lincoln Street well. Two, three, seven, eight and nine. So five of the nine are not um, in any way, shape or form within uh, the normal work week or work month, as far as we know of DPW. So if, if they're to get done at all.
Two and three.
Just two and three.
Well, two, three.
Two, three, seven, eight and nine.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in here, Steve.
That was my question. What's the DPW responsibility versus not?
Yeah, and I, I do want to hear from Chuck. I need to be keeping an eye on timing here, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the, um, board members. Brian?
Well, I have to agree with Kathy. You know, I'm a step forward isn't it? Yeah, but, uh, no, I just think that we have a resource with Chuck and I think, uh, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. And, you know, I feel also about trying to step back on the government as opposed to expanding it. We're, we're all, we're best when we surround ourselves with the people that know what they're talking about. And I'd like to, you know, I'm, I'm gonna take Chuck's lead on this.
John? Yes, well, I'm, I'm on the task force, so I'm pretty close to this. And numbers two and three are really the key ones for this task force. The amount of information, the trove of information we're gonna get from these meters is going to be overwhelming. And we can manage, uh, consumption and conservation and programs to a very great extent with all of that information. I mean, to a point where we can't really even imagine exactly what we do with it, but we will get a great deal of it out of there and we need somebody to look at that data as to how usage is going, who's doing what and where. It's really dealing with the soft, that the information that the software provides and then coming up with programs that might communicate or otherwise, uh, promote conservation.
And that's only going to become increasingly important.
And, and that's the, that is the primary role that these three people would be involved with. I, I agree 100%. One, four, five and six, Chuck is running with that pretty much 100%.
Okay, um, and having, having quite, um, I see seven as being distinctly in, in Chuck's area.
Yeah.
And, um, the handling the numbers, we, the, the, this is really in the bailiwick of the sustainability committee is conservation. Um, um, and whatever information we have about needing more zoning overlay in Manchester is something that, um, we need to push to the planning board. Um, you're not going to have three people who aren't the planning board doing zoning. And the dialogue, um, with Hamilton Essex and Wenham, I think, falls in our laps. I don't, I just don't see him, the, uh, we can perhaps other people, sustainability committee, for example, might be able to make a connection. But in terms of talking with towns about, our neighboring towns about changing their zoning laws, that's something that pretty much has to happen at the select board or at the administrator level. In my.
And, uh, so basically what I'm hearing is we want to extend the mandate of sustainability.
Or reshape.
Or reshape.
Re-focus or reshape.
Add to their.
Yeah.
And that's not to say that some of the people on this task force would be these people. That we're expecting to be that some, some, some of those people to be among them. And so maybe it becomes a subgroup within sustainability or something like that. That's.
One question I had about your comment, John, around the data analysis on number two. So the water rates. Um, we don't do that. I mean, we approve the water rates based on information provided to us. I'm presuming there's some data analysis that goes on already. So I'm just not clear on.
That's, that's where, why don't we, um, I, I want to wrap this up and, and then come back to it. Because yes, it's very important. Um, but I want to hear from Chuck and, um, your take on this information.
Yeah, uh, can you hear me? So.
Sure can.
Yeah, um, so, you know, we've been working with, uh, Steve and the rest of the task force for the past over a year. And so, you know, the, these recommendations that they were gonna put in this report, uh, and you know, that Steve discussed tonight is not any sort of surprise to me. I, you know, I do feel like we've been able to give input. Um, you know, I do think and sorry, I didn't get to tune in. I was actually with Steve on ConCon before this, but, uh, so I didn't get to see Sue Beckman's, uh, presentation, uh, but you know, I, I do think it's hard for me to commit to, uh, you know, another, um, you know, another group or, you know, committee to oversee just this, because I do feel like, you know, we do do a lot of it, but that's not to say that, you know, like, uh, I think Kathy's question about, uh, you know, the water rates for conservation and stuff like that. I mean, that's, that's well beyond anything that, you know, I would have to pay a consultant to get there. And I think actually, you know, one of the good things out of this, uh, task force was, you know, the ability of some of the townspeople to contribute in, in a way like this. Uh, both Steve, John and a couple others on the committee, especially with respect to those, uh, you know, but conservation rates. So it, it's a, it's a tough one. Um, you know, I, like I said, I'm not looking for another committee, uh, but you know, there, there are some things and I think that where this came out of was people's, um, you know, interest in the topic of water. So that's, that's a good thing in my opinion. Uh, but also, um, yeah, and you, where do we go after this? Um, it's hard, it's hard for me to say, so I guess, uh, I'll have to think about it a little bit. Um, but, um, yeah, and uh, you know, I guess I don't want to go, you know, item by item, but so, yeah, I think, uh, you know, it's a good list. A lot of these things we're already doing. So I, I agree that you know, it, it's good for me, I think, to have a report and have the, you know, public backing on some of these things. Certainly, you know, water meter replacements and conservation rates are definitely something that I'm gonna need, yeah, town support for. And, you know, I, you know, and an extension of that is the select board, I think, will, will need that, uh, support. So, you know, that, that's all a good thing, but yeah, it is stuff that it's kind of already on my radar, stuff that we're already doing, but so can kind of go both ways with it on that one. Um, but, uh, any specific questions? I guess that's kind of my uh, thought process right now, I guess.
Okay, I, I, I think that we all need to spend a little time, um, looking over this, um, and, and this huge amount of work that is, um, gone into the presentation this evening, um, by the Water Resource Protection Task Force and all the people, um, were very faithful for all the work and, um, I, I, I do think that we need to keep this uh, front and center, especially given, um, the Fed changing what their, um, allowables are. So when do we want to revisit the draft recommendations? Can I just point out one, um, the sustainability committee currently has two vacancies. And I think if they have a hard time, I think if we gave them more authority, more responsibility, they would attract people who were interested in water.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, yeah. And I think this is all part of what
Right.
governance is.
Could we get, uh, like, specific on what the next action might be? So if I'm hearing a general consensus that we want to consider expanding, um,
Sustainability.
Sustainability Committee responsibilities. So is that something, um, this team or Chuck could take the action to come back to exactly what responsibilities would we be asking them to take on? And then, um, personally, I, I, I need a little more information on this data analysis help. So I don't understand the difference between the data analysis they do right now versus the new data analysis that they need extra help with and whether or not we really need a committee to do that or whether or not, you know, how frequently is it done? Is that something you can hire an external resource to crunch the numbers and, uh, propose rate structures on a annual basis? So I just, I'm not understanding exactly what help they need versus what they already do.
Kathy, I can talk to you offline if you want, or I could go into it now, but you know, it's, it's generally, you know, it's much more in-depth than the process we're going through right now. And it's a kind of a wholesale change that they're proposing.
And I, I would like to hear more on this. I think we all need to, the whole board needs to. Um, so if we're putting this on our action item list, um, which we've got the Water Resource Task Force on there, but, um, task force. I think maybe on the 15th of May, we ask to um, more detail on, on the analysis of rates.
We should have answers by then.
And, um, discuss expanding sustainability, but we have to bring sustainability on for that. No, we just hand it to them.
We are empowered.
The, uh, we probably ought to hear more about number six, which is expand expedite repairs to the water, um, wastewater treatment plant. Um, because that will save 10% of the water that we treat and reduce the amount of water that we put out, which is something else that the state regulates. And that's something that really goes into the budget. Because, but we would like the DPW to figure out what they need for budgets so that we can get that into next year. Or maybe.
I'll say a lot of these, a lot of these tie into the budget, uh, you know, the ones that are in my court for sure.
Yeah, the new, the new, um, meters.
Yep.
All right, so we will come back to this on the 15th. Chuck, um, are you available then? Do you know?
Um, I'll, I'll figure it out or I'll, uh, I'll put my best guy on it.
Okay. All right, so we will add that to action items. And that will be, John, does that, and Steve?
Yeah.
Does that give you time?
Yeah, that should be plenty of time to have a couple of alternative rate structures for you to consider. We have a consultant on board who's doing a sanity check for us, but to tell the truth, we have built the first ever demand model for, uh, Manchester drinking water. Uh, Chuck and Nate are experts at the cost side of this matter, and that's usually how rates are set to cover the costs. We're proposing that rates be set, uh, obviously enough to cover costs, but with a primary objective of conservation.
Okay, so that will be, uh, May 15th. All right, Steve, thank you very much. Chuck, thank you. Um, and please pass on to the rest of, uh, the resource task force, our, um, gratitude.
I will, and apologies again for springing this on you.
It happens. Okay, thank you. Next we have approval of harbor mooring and water regulations amendments.
Hi, everybody.
Way by on.
So, uh, this is just, uh, sort of the, used to be annual update of the existing harbor rules and regulations. Um, it's been a couple of years because of the pandemic. Do you all have, uh, copies of this? Or should I try in screen share?
I have it on my computer.
You have it? Oh, that's really, that makes me so happy. Okay. Uh, so if you open up the, the regulations, hopefully you have the copy with the numbers down the left side. And, uh, anything that's, uh, changed or new is in red. And go to page. Go to page. Three. Uh, a lot of this is just cleaning up the language a little bit, um. Spell check tells me to do stuff, so I do it. I add a comma if it says so. Um. First change though, uh, line one twenty-eight through one thirty. Uh, minimum boat length of thirteen in the mooring fields for mooring boats, uh. Thirteen feet because the dinghies are a maximum of twelve. And we're trying not to populate the harbor with dinghies on the moorings.
By on, what is a boomkin?
Boomkin. Well, a boom is the pointy thing off the front of a sailboat. That allows more sails. A boomkin goes off the back of the boat. And, uh, you'll see it more commonly in a, a yawl or a, or a catch.
Just gonna have, okay, can you?
You're welcome.
Yeah. All right. So, so question by on. Is, is this because there are a number of moorings that have dinghies on them? That should not, or maybe they should, they're in between boats and they happen to have a season where they don't have regular boat or.
Right. So that's season.
Motivating this.
Right, uh, more down in Magnolia, uh, that's where we have. A couple of people who've. Put placeholder boats out there year after year after year. You can leave a mooring vacant, uh, for a year. For the regulation with no penalty at all. So if you're in between boats, you have a year. To find it and. Uh, during the pandemic once and, and since, uh. With it being so hard to find vessels, certainly. Uh, there's a, a little bit of extra room for folks, but. Um. Dinghies are twelve feet long. You can't have anything longer than twelve feet at the dock. For tender. So, uh, that's tenants designated maximum tender length, so. Uh, the mooring, the mooring field doesn't. If. If people are going to just put, uh, twelve foot dinghies out there to hold a mooring spot, we're not. Not using the mooring filters that should be used.
And. First. Silly question probably. What was wrong with section K?
Hey, sex, where is section K?
In the table of contents.
Oh, section K. So, uh, nothing's wrong, except that with the changes. We have, uh, moved some of the language further down. So I, all this is doing is reflecting the page change that in, in the document.
Okay, so it goes from J to L.
Section K, oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, okay. That's, that's me. I, I will correct that. Thank you, Ann, for pointing out that. I've been very unfair to the letter K.
Uh, I, I try and defend all of my, all of the letters. I, now I can't find it. Tenders or. For the tender, what was that? There, there are tenders and there are. Small boats. Talking about at the, at the, uh. At the floats, you, two types of permits.
Yes.
Tender, tender and non-tender.
Yeah, so we hang, uh, are we there yet? Hang on, let me.
You're gonna go through these one by one.
Yeah, but, but this is something that is throughout. Is, is what is a non-tender?
A non-tender would be a vessel. Twelve feet in length or less. That is tied to the dock, say at Tuck's Point or Reed Park. It is not a tender, it's not, uh. Boat that's used to get to a mooring. It's somebody who decided I'd like to have a little dinghy at the dock, twelve feet or less. Um, a lot of these, most of these actually are motorized. So, uh, that's, some are tenders and some are just. Runabouts or whatever you want to call them.
So at line thirty-one, section F dot permits for tenders and tenders, is it? For tenders and non-tenders?
Okay, permits for tenders. Yes, that's correct. Should be non-tenders. So I am.
Though that's. Not. Knowing. Okay, so where do you want to say?
Yeah, that's another typo. Thank you. You see why I come and have this done every year?
Because you're a masochist?
That's it. All right, uh, are we good on? Lines one twenty-eight to one thirty?
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, so the next. Thing of any consequence is. Page number.
Seven.
Seven, yep, uh, line two fifty-six. So we, we since the pandemic have. Developed, uh. Three other wait lists, Magnolia, Black Beach and Shallow Water waitlist. Uh, they've all, uh, got names on them. They all require, uh. Attention. Um. And they all will pay a fee. That must be renewed by March thirty-first. The only list that's exempt, in, in my opinion, should be the change of location list. These are folks who already have moorings. They already pay a waterway fee. Uh, so, um, and, and. Once you're on it, there, you don't go off it until you get, uh. Your next mooring. So I just wanted to make it clear that the change of location list. Is exempt. And does it say change? Yeah, it does say change. Any questions on that? So let me see. Page eight.
Three oh seven.
Uh, uh, page eight, uh, line two ninety. Uh, in this here, uh, just. Uh, make sure that, uh, other folks who want to use the, the hoist. At Mascanomo Morse Pier. Uh, do, they do not get in the way of, uh, the commercial fisheries activities. Doesn't deny access, but the fishermen have. Priority. So for example, in the past, um. The ferry that went to Baker's Island. Would need to use the hoist. And. We just want to make sure that other users are. Making sure fishermen get the priority. They're coming in with live lobsters that need to get. Delivered to the wholesaler as soon as possible, so. That's.
And all that goes to use, so there's no change on that by on, is that? Correct?
Uh. No change as far as, I'm sorry.
I, I just don't see anything highlighted in that section.
On page, uh, two, on line two ninety?
Correct.
Morse Pier. It isn't highlighted for yours. Well, I apologize. So, uh. Mine it says with prior permission of the harbor master and. That should have been highlighted. That's new.
Okay, thank you.
That's a new section. I'll, I'll make sure I read that. And then if we go down to line three oh eight. Uh, we've changed most of the, uh. Free tie-up period at the town docks. From sixty minutes to thirty minutes. So thirty minutes would be the, the new number.
How did you come up with that?
Well, sixty minutes has always been. An overwhelmingly long time, uh, compared to any harbor in New England. And the problem with sixty minutes is that it encourages people to come in and. Go do things that might take more than an hour. And if you're going to do that, then we now have two hundred and fifty feet of. Uh, transient docking space available for you. And this here just ensures that those seventy-five feet of free tie-up that we've always had. Uh, is, um. More readily available, uh, for folks who are coming in, going for an ice cream, going to the store. Uh, you know. Most of that short-term tie-up is, is less than half an hour.
Okay, and. Um, is there a place where, um. Someone who has, who has picked up a mooring in the harbor for overnight could bring a dinghy?
Yeah, so absolutely. And so anyone who's on a mooring, uh, transient guest. Uh. Can bring their dinghy in and tie up on the backside of any of the docks. Free of charge. We don't charge for dinghy tie-up. You're not allowed to tie up on the face where the big boats are. You have all kinds of free space in the back.
Thank you.
All right, so going to page. Nine. I did get it right here, line three thirteen. Where it was tender dock regulations. Now it says tender and. Non-tender regulations. Line three fourteen, we added and non-tender. And dock space may not be passed down in a family that was already there. Mostly what I've done is added and non-tender wherever it says tenders.
Mm-hmm.
Going down, same right through line three thirty.
Before we go on.
Yeah.
Three twenty.
Yeah.
Um. Is where it says vessels, comma, town docks are. Should that be or?
Uh, yes. Yep. I'm correcting it as we speak. Thank you.
It's not a baby, but I'm just.
Uh, no, this is good. This is good. More eyes on. It gets cleaner every time. Yeah, okay, so now we go to. Page. Ten. Keep going. Mostly corrections other people have made. My typing. Going to page eighteen.
Page fourteen.
Page nineteen.
On page fourteen, you had line. Five. Thirteen, five twelve, five thirteen. In terms.
Fourteen, five thirteen.
Uh, five thirteen.
Five thirteen, yep.
They just type and edited it.
Okay, um.
Yeah, that was the spell check thing.
Okay.
Uh, so onto page nineteen. And it just talks about the renewal of, uh. Tenders, um. And making sure those permits are paid on an annual basis.
Um. Do you mean on seven thirty-four? Tie-up of tenders and non-tenders?
Yes, and non-tenders. Thank you.
And. Number seven twenty-three? Or seven thirty-one? Which spelling?
Uh. I have. Seven, you said seven twenty-three?
Yep.
I have town hall on seven twenty-three.
No, when you're seven twenty-five.
Yeah. Where it says.
Oh, Reed Park, that's, yeah, it's R, it's R E E, sorry. Yeah.
No, no.
That's, that's much better. Oh, and there it is again down there. All right. Good. Got it.
Those are showing on you.
All right. And going down now to page.
Twenty-three.
Uh, twenty-three, yes. So now we're getting down to the, the new fees. Um. The dredge assessment. Uh, which was. Approved a couple of years ago. Uh, two fifty per foot for all vessels. And then the non-tender small boat fee, rather than the seventy-five dollars that a mooring holder pays. Uh, somebody who wants to just keep the little boat at the dock. And the fee's two hundred dollars. And then, uh, as far as wait lists go. No matter where, which field you've chosen, uh, it's twenty dollars annually to be on that fee. On that, yeah, on that waitlist, sorry. And then we've had the change, this was. Actually, right after the last approval, uh, that year. Uh, the Reed Park transient overnight tie-up fee. Uh, went from sixty dollars flat rate to three dollars a foot. And that's it.
Um. So three dollars a foot for overnight, eight dollars hourly for. Spending the afternoon?
Correct, right. You, no matter the size of your vessel, it's eight dollars an hour.
So, so by on a question, what, um. So what led you to that particular number? Um, and why not change the hourly? What type, what communities did you look at to see if we were competitive?
Well, three dollars a foot is. On the very low side, we have zero amenities. Um. No, uh, water on the dock, no electricity on the dock. No restrooms, no showers, nothing. We have absolutely nothing. So three dollars a foot, uh, really would be. Uh, appropriate, uh, there are other. Communities around us charging significantly more, uh, some charging. A little bit more, uh, five dollars a foot is not uncommon. But there are amenities for those folks, so. Back in twenty twenty, I was, the HAC thought three dollars a foot would be. The appropriate amount. And then the hourly rate of eight dollars, um. The goal. That the HAC and I all really wanted to do is we wanted to make sure. That the boaters contributed for coming in and having access to such a great dock, but we did not want to prohibit. People spending money in the bus, businesses downtown. And eight dollars has been very well received. Uh, people think it's fair. And they go and they spend a lot of money. In the shops and. Stores and restaurants downtown, which is really ultimately the goal. So.
I was wondering, because it's an odd number. I would have wanted ten, you know, I mean.
Yeah. Ten, ten, two figures is a little harder for folks to swallow than eight, uh. Um. Uh, the, the price can change anytime. I, I will, will charge whatever, uh, folks want, but back when we first opened. In twenty nineteen. I didn't like the flat rate for the overnight. But, uh. I, I don't think anybody else even charges for an hourly tie-up if I'm not mistaken. Unless you're going to Pickering Wharf and then you're paying. Uh, a flat rate of twenty-five dollars or. Coming in and tying up to go to eat. I would say sixteen is a lot more common for us two hours. So. I. I think it's, I, I think. We don't need to beat up the boaters at the dock. I'd rather have them get beat up in the shops. We, we made thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, at the dock last year. Um. And that was with our really low overnight rate. And it, it was an off year compared, compared to the last year. I don't know if that was fuel. Costs that kept some of the folks away. But the shops all did really well. I think if. We were to walk around and ask restaurant owners and, and others if, if the re-park docks made a dis- difference in their numbers. They'll tell you yes. And that, that's. And that, that's, to me, that's the real goal. And they're not coming in and taking any parking spaces in the street.
Okay, um, are there any other comments or questions on these? I move to, before we do that, I have, um, one, three, three, six of. Other very de minimis changes, so.
Okay.
If, if anybody wants me to go over those now, we can, otherwise, we can approve. With these being sent to by, I don't think we need to.
I'm happy to have you send them to me and I'll, I'll correct those before I. Send the final out.
I moved to approve the, um, harbor mooring and waterway regulation amendments. Um, with the de minimis corrections provided by, um, Chairman James.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solace, the role called, and Anderson, yes. Kathy Blata, yes, Brian Solace, John Round.
Yes.
And Becky Jake says, yes, thank you, Bayon.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'll email those to you after the meeting this evening.
Alright, that's great, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have, um, the library review grant process for possible expansion. Um, and I do want to. Make one comment on that. There we go, um. The, the letter that was sent out, um. By David Lumston and, um. When he was saying what I, what I was agreeing to. Um, it, it wasn't that I was in agreement. Um, with all the uses. I did think they were important, but I was not in agreement from the standpoint of speaking for the board. I just want to make that clarification, so we have Rick Rogers tonight, we're starting a little bit late. You have ten minutes.
Well, I, I will get you back on schedule, I think as fast as possible, um, hi everyone, Rick Rogers, eighty two Old Essex Road, Chairman of the Library Trustees. Um, what we're asking for this evening is your acknowledgements and I guess approval. Uh, basically to open the door to apply for a grant a year from now. So if, if you'd like to discuss the need for expansion and enhancement of the library, I'm happy to. Discuss or read a statement about why the trustees feel that a, a library change is needed. I think if you've been in the library, you recognize it is a small space. Even challenged in towns of our own size to meet the number of services that those libraries provide. Um, ADA access, any number of different things, right? So we're looking at, um, a strategic plan that's been in place for a while now to expand the library. A request from our patronage and township, we've done surveys with them to expand library services. So. It's been seven years since Massachusetts has opened the door for grants to, for library expansion. And the door is coming open again next year. What we're looking to do is simply state a letter of intent. To apply for a grant by May thirty first of twenty twenty four. If we don't state our intent right now with the town. Acknowledgement. That application will not be considered. We have. A year plus to figure out what our plans might be. And decide if we will proceed with that grant application or not. This is really just our foot in the door to keep the door open. We are looking at a couple of different adjacent properties to potentially purchase the grant, could it count for some of that? We also have savings between the library foundation and recent endowments. That would help the town that's offset the acquisition of that property. What the expansion might look like, I don't think we know at this point, right? We, we have absolutely would want to consider the town plan. Senior centers, community centers, whatever else might be involved. In a typical modern library. This is literally just to keep the process going or initiate the process, that's all we're looking to do.
Thank you, and I will say we are very well acquainted with this type of process, we know exactly. And, and how it works, so let me go around to the board. Um, any questions, John?
Yeah, a, a couple, so this application is in there and I guess it's for, who's the granting agency?
Uh, it's run through an organization called Amplifund, but I believe it is overseen by the Massachusetts Board of Library Trustees.
But I, I assume it's for them to keep score so that they know how many institutions are interested.
Absolutely, and that's why the process hasn't been open for seven years.
Right. Are, are we going to hear back from them at all, or they're just, or just an acknowledgement, we've got your letter and that's it?
That's a great question, um. I know it is reviewed, like, we're applying for the full one hundred thousand dollar grant and they have an option to, I think, reduce that. I believe that there will be a response to our application or our letter of intent, but I honestly don't know, I can't answer that question this evening.
Okay. Next.
Brian?
No, I, I think.
Kathy. And?
Very clearly explained. Um, no questions.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion?
I move that we agree to endorse the application of the library for a grant. Is there some?
Mass- Massachusetts Public Library Commission Program Grant.
From the Massachusetts.
Letter of intent.
A letter of intent for the Massachusetts, sorry.
Massachusetts Public Library Commission Program, Massachusetts Public Library Commission Grant.
Grant process.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round. Brooke Hall, vote, John Round.
Yes.
Brian Solomon, Kathy Blata, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jake says, yes, thanks, Mr. Rogers, do we, do we have that sign right now and we can let Mr. Rogers get on his merry way?
Let you get on to marry you.
Or marry me, you're not going to hang me?
I wasn't at the dentist's, I don't give my taxes.
You, thank you. Thank you all, so the rest of the, uh, Board of Trustees.
Yeah, okay, so.
He's Greg, has to sign it.
Do I take it, Greg, or do you want to just give it to Sarah? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Planning Board Alternates Discussion. Greg, do you want to start this one?
Uh, sure, so, um. As part of the, uh. Proposed amendments to the zoning law, section twelve. This is the administrative piece. Uh, that. Uh, was passed over at town meeting, um, but it contains a proposal that, um, there, there would be alternate, two alternates to the planning board. Uh, the Senate Member Board, you're proposing to have two alternates. Who, uh, serve in, in cases where a regular member might have to recuse themselves or a conflict or some other, um, reason. Um, and the proposal was for, for the planning board to appoint. Uh, those alternates. And so I think you wanted to have a discussion about, um. About that, uh, the alternative perhaps is for. You and the planning board to, to make that a, a joint appointment. Um, because that's the same process that's used for filling a vacancy, um, on the planning board. Uh, right. Talking to a couple of you, you know, the logic is. Is that, uh. An, an alternate would be a very high candidate, likely candidate to fill a vacancy, should, should a vacancy come up. Um, so I think the thinking is that perhaps. In appointing the alternate, it should be the same process.
John?
So, uh, questions, the alternates are needed because there are a lot of people that recuse themselves?
A lot.
Or, eh, eh, enough that it.
It comes out.
Issue.
Yeah, where someone is going to be away, is going to miss a meeting, you know, that sort of thing.
Or they need specific expertise if they was one of the, uh.
Someone would have to sit down. Someone would have to sit down in order for that alternate to participate. So, doesn't happen a lot. Um, but it has, it has happened.
Okay, okay, and is the intent, is this at the pleasure of the chair or? Somebody recuses themselves, they may not necessarily be replaced, that automatically is going to happen?
So it would generally automatically.
Okay.
It would be up to the chair to do that, but the, the expectation would be that the, the chair would then, uh, place an alternate. Instead of someone who has had to step down.
I thought the whole board said that they would be selecting that person, not, not the sole discretion of the chair.
I'm just trying to, the alternates would be chosen by the full board, but whether or not the alternate was served, I think that the duty of the chair person take. To notify the alternate when they're needed.
Yeah, but Becky's bringing up the point. How many alternates are involved? And then which one is it? Is that what you?
Typically, you.
At the pleasure of the chair.
You rotated or.
I don't know.
How does the zoning Board of Appeals handle its aldermen?
I can speak to that.
I thought.
We have three voting, uh. The bo- voting members and then there are two alternates, okay, for instance, tomorrow night. Um, one alternate will be stepping up because the, uh, voting member won't be there. So usually, for the most part, everyone, including alternates, will show up to a site, uh, visit. Uh, but if, uh, the chair recognizes it's going to be a problem, because. Uh, she was notified in advance, then she'll reach out and make sure that there'll be people to show up. Okay, and for a lot, most of the time, everyone's there, including the alternate, just even to sit through the entire, the meeting. Uh, going through forty feet was very important. Have everyone at front, okay, so, um. Yeah, I mean, it's. It's, it becomes, it's almost a, uh. I don't know, um, you know in advance if you're not going to make a meeting. You'll notify the chair that you won't be there. And, uh, it works out very well. And then trying to step down as an opinion.
Brian?
Uh, no, I think, I, I, uh, I, I support the alternates, I also feel that the select board should have a voice in the selection of these alternates.
Yeah, same, and, uh, uh, I believe the discussion at the planning board, that the need for the alternates was based on availability, they wanted to make sure. They could have the right votes in a timely manner, um, and not be worried about people's availability, so. I support that, but I do think the select board should, um, should play a role in selecting the alternates.
As do I, 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 um. Having served on that board as well, um, as well as chairing it for a while. Um, I, I think it's. Important to maintain. How. People are acquainted in the town, and it has always been a joint. Um, appointment, and I, I don't see, I haven't heard any. Good arguments for it being otherwise. Okay, so. I think we are, I'm hearing everyone is in agreement with that, correct? Greg? Do you want anything more from us other than that at this point?
No, I think that's fine.
Can, can we just take a vote just so that it's?
Yes. Yep.
Move that we recommend. That, um, alternates to the planning board be selected by, um. A jo- at a joint meeting over. Planning board and select board.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Blata, role called, Ann Harrison, yes. Kathy Blata, yes, Brian Solace.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
And Becky Jake says, yes, okay, thank you. Next up for discussion, we are talking about.
Janet from Rod.
I'm sorry, sorry, oh, hello, Ron. I didn't, there you go, Ron?
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, just, just a quick, could you, uh, just send us, uh, the reason why you feel that way? That it should be a joint decision, I think that's what the board was. Interested in, and then I think I would bring it up to the board whether we move this. Uh, forward for a fall town meeting.
Bless you. Okay, um, Greg, can you do that, or, or Debbie? Thank you, Ron.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we have, uh. The MBTA Task Force, we are not discussed, we're not, um. Choosing. Uh, candidates this evening, we will be doing that at the next meeting. But one of the questions. We need to figure out which one of us will serve on the task force and, uh. Couple other items to discuss. Does anybody from the board specifically feel inclined?
I do.
Okay, wonderful, alright, Anne? Anybody else? Okay. With your ever decreasing free time. We will appoint Anne as the liaison for the MBTA. Or not liaison, but the member before the select board to the MBTA Task Force. Um. Thank you. And if you need a, if you need a backup, let me know, I would be very.
Or I can, I can as well.
Would you prefer to?
Yeah, I'd prefer to.
Okay, alright, so. Anne is. At bat and John is.
On deck.
Okay, so one of the questions that we've been need to address in terms of, um. The at large candidates is, um, whether or not to. Have. People who are not here year round. The concern being that this is going to be a very critical task force. Um, with a lot of asks and. I think it might. Cause some issues. If we do not have people who are here and present and able to go on meetings, um, around town.
What it, what, what is going to be the life of this task force, when does it start? And when does it end, does this have a hard end on the thirty first of December in twenty twenty four?
Well, it'll really be done before then because the town has to vote. Before then.
I'm trying to get a handle on the seasonality.
So it's basically, it's basically starting, you know, in a, in a couple of weeks. Couple, three weeks until. The latest would be, you know, November twenty four. So it'll be in fairly intensive work for the next year at a minimum.
Okay.
You know, most likely a year and a half.
Had a question, just a clarifying question on your point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, was it that you think all members of the task force should be full time residents or just the at large?
No, I think everybody on the task force, yes, yeah. Yeah, I mean. In residence, not zooming in, because there will be a lot of site.
There'll be site one, a lot of that, so. We'll be looking at sections of town, there'll be. We'll be looking at section of the town, it'll be. Having, having, uh, being in person is pretty important.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I just got a question, is that something that say, I mean, the zoning board has to deal with that a lot? Maybe not so much the planning board, I don't know, of course, you guys have alternates.
I was at a uh. Site visit today before we keep here, no, we, for the zoning board, we just, we're just basically committed to one night a week, one night a month for uh. Our one site visit was Saturdays, we wouldn't done it, now as the summer progresses to an evening. And one night, so basically it's not a big commitment from the zoning board's standpoint, but we're not looking at policy.
And this is going to be.
Policy.
I, eh eh, I mean, this is leading to policy.
Right, I mean, at that point, but I think that what I'm hearing is that, uh, you know. There's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of information gathering. And it's, it's gonna be a big time site for someone.
Several someone, some, some. But, and this is, I I I would like to get, um. The rest of the board's perspective on what I feel is pretty critical. For um, members of this task force, and it's not that, I mean, yeah, you can go away and zoom in here and there. But but if you go away for months at a time, I I don't. I don't think. I think that's a detriment to the task force.
I uh, I think that this is a critical. Junction and and. Big growth of the town, and someone has to, and so a commitment.
Potential growth.
Uh, yeah, well, one way or the other, it's, it's, it's critical.
Mm-hmm.
And that, uh, someone has to be willing to be able to make that commitment. And that gives us a sense of how seriously they're gonna take the uh. The uh, the role that they're, they're commissioned.
Kathy? Yeah, I think that's a fair request, it's a pretty important, um. Task force, um, and the, the physical nature of the meetings, um. You know, they are gonna happen at any time of the year, and if you're not here, nothing for to be paid, so yeah, I think that's a fair request.
Anne?
Um. I think that's a fair request, I typically take. I'm, I'm a lot of time off in August, but I can come back and I will, um, and I think. It's, you know, Maine isn't nearly as far as Florida or. So.
Okay, um, do you need a formal motion, Greg, on that?
It always helps to.
Okay, in that case, we need to be a little bit more formal about what we mean by going away.
Um.
To that point, I don't wanna preclude a really qualified person. You know, so we have to, yeah, so, you know, is it a three-month extended stay, is it a one-month extended stay?
You know, I I mean, more to the point, it's not that people are away, I mean, if you wanna spend the money on flights. And come back weekly, yeah.
Or two, yeah.
Be my guest.
Well, plus, it's, it's being available to.
That's the issue, that's the issue.
Being available at forty-eight hours notice or something and.
It it's, well, you need more than that because you'd have to post it.
Okay.
But, um. So like, I'd hate to have somebody be appointed and then they say, well. I I can't do, I can't do it now.
So, so maybe the, I think what we're asking is what is the criteria for membership, right, that's really what we're trying to discuss. Are there any? Similar requirements at any of our other, it was EBA and other.
Well, yeah, all the boards and committees, if you miss. I think it's three consecutive meetings, you have, that you you've effectively.
That's grounds for removal.
That's grounds for removal, okay, but with with Zoom, it'll, you know, that's, that's not counting, it's missing a meet, right, you know, so I think there's. Where I'm asking, is there, um. Is there a way to phrase the requirement in a similar way, but give the person some, um. Um, expectation as to how many meetings will happen? Or how frequently the meetings might happen, so so they can attest that they will. You know, understand those meetings have to be in person, they have to be available in person, not Zoom, and here's what we expect. The frequency to be.
I ask also, uh, not only with the posted meetings, but is there uh, an assumption that there'll be other. Sub-meetings, as it were, you know, you know, that you're all of a sudden. Uh, you know, that, what, and it doesn't have to be posted, but you know, we're gonna be getting together uh to discuss something.
Probably not, I don't think.
But it could well be.
Yeah.
Some, some groups working on X, Y, and Z, but those would be, uh, normally those would be posted meetings.
So my point is, okay.
Okay, so, so that, 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 most of these meetings are, shall we call them site meetings? That we're really talking about, I mean, physically, they're not physically in the same room, but physically at whatever place you're looking at.
But I think that's the concern, but obviously, the, the meeting is that you can do by Zoom, but you can't do a Zoom meeting on-site.
So it seems to me, if you miss two or three consecutive. Site meetings.
But that puts you behind the eight ball, I'm just gonna stop.
That's right, and you're having to play catch-up by bringing somebody else, and and right now, we have. Um, FinCom members, EBA member, planning board, two planning board members. Um. Historic District Commission, Select Board, COMCOM, Downtown Improvement, and then two at-large. So, and one of the at-large with climate change experience, so.
So do we, do we want us, um, is the criteria that? We want these people to be year-round residents, I mean, certainly we're not precluding people going on vacation, right? So we want year-round residents. Um. Is, is that a way of phrasing it, or is that?
Well, the.
It doesn't preclude anybody from going on vacation.
Year-round residents.
It's, it's all about the meetings.
You know, even if you go away for three months at a time.
That's not what I would mean, is it, year-round residents, so that's.
Right.
It's, it's about the meetings.
Okay.
You know, and uh, if you wanna go down there every weekend.
Yeah.
And I know people that do that.
So I guess what I'm asking then. Can we phrase it such as expect, you know, a person who makes this commitment to the task force. Must be available for bi-weekly or weekly in-person meeting, I mean, just.
Yeah, something like.
Something like.
That's to be meeting oriented rather than lifestyle.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That's correct.
So, would they, would the task force be meeting weekly, would it be, no, bi-weekly?
Probably, probably the most is twice a month.
Okay. So.
With, with, with potentially some work in between and subcommittee work in between and maybe a site visit in between.
Mm-huh.
That's, that's what I would envision. So it it will be fairly intensive work for, you know, sixteen-month period or so.
I, I would say that someone's willing to make that commitment, they're gonna. But I think that, like you said, you know, as long as they're aware of what commitment is that they're making, and that's.
Tell me, can you do it or can't you do it?
Yeah, that's important.
So I think we need to think on this a little bit, um, um. Firm up.
Maybe that's during the interview process.
Yep.
You asked a question.
I, I agree. I think you can do it that way.
But as we're. Um, announcing the position and and looking for candidates. The announcement should say.
Yes.
That this is requires um, multiple meetings per month in person.
In person, yes. Yep. Okay. Uh, are we suggesting that that's a, this is the question I asked earlier, is that for everybody on the board? And do these people who have already been named, do they? Understand that?
But I think there is a distinction. Between. Board and committee members. Um, who already have. Well, I don't know.
Well, that's my original question.
Yeah, yeah.
Expectations just on the at-large, people or everybody.
The board people ahead do a, held a different standard, which is these three meetings in a row, sort of thing.
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I think it needs to be everybody.
Okay, so we already have people who have been named by their committees.
And impose restrictions now.
That's what I'm at, and that's what I'm asking.
I don't see a problem with.
Okay.
Oh, and we, there's always the possibility that if they, if someone misses three meetings, which would include site visits. In a row, then they can be.
That, that's still applied regardless.
Who is accountable for monitoring that, is this, does this task force come under the planning board, so? It would be up to the planning board to.
Yes.
Notice that people are not attending.
Ron has his hand up. Ron?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chair, um. Is the selection of at-large uh candidates a joint decision by the planning board and the select board, or is it?
Be, should be.
Okay.
That was at least my understanding.
Okay, so. What you're deciding is. Um. On their availability, and that's your decision, I guess.
I. Greg?
Well, it's be your recommendation.
Yeah, it's more of a recommendation, Ron.
Okay.
And you can, as I said, doing particularly, agreeing to do it as a joint, you can. Again, have the, have the discussion, ask people's availability, and that can be part of, that can be part of the conversation.
Does that? Answer that, or answer a question, Ron?
Yes, I, I, I guess, I just, um. I, I was curious, this, this um task force, they'll report back to the. Planning board at some time ahead of the deadline, I would think. Is, is that the pers- process?
I, I would expect so. I would think it would have to report back.
To both courts?
Well, no, uh, yes, of course, to, to both boards, but. We frequent updates, and I don't want to see this. Come down to a town and a special town meeting in late November where.
Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
But it probably will.
I won't be there.
Yeah, I think there's some urgency here, and and I agree.
Hey.
So if you wanna try to set that up at your next meeting?
So are there?
Time is ticking away.
So, yeah, when are we going to promote?
So it's been promoted at different, so we can promote it in the next two weeks.
What about the call for? I think a general call for, um. Interest.
Applicants or whatever.
Applicants, yeah, through our Facebook, cricket article, we've done all that, I just, like I said.
I don't, they haven't been in article, but there's been.
I mean, not posting in the.
Yeah, there's been a couple of posts, and but we can do some more.
And we have, we've had three or four people express. Interest, all right, so we would, I I don't wanna wait. Much longer to get this, um, going. Uh. When? When can we next? Get this addressed, should we just set up a joint meeting with the planning board? Sooner than later?
So, the next, the, the, the next few weeks, it'd be nice to do that, so either as part of your next regular or part of the next. Planning board regular or a special meeting, I think those are the three options.
Yeah, yeah. What, do you want the next planning board? Next Monday?
So Ron, you meet on the twen- you meet next week, and then.
We're meeting on Monday, correct?
And then, and then you're meeting it on the eighth.
On the eighth. So it would, and it's too early to do next week, I would think, but the plan, well, we can't, it's already posed, but, um.
So our, our next meeting is.
Five-one.
Yep.
Five-eight or five-fifteen?
Five-one.
I wanna, I can zoom in, I hope.
Um. Ron?
Yes.
Do you, um, ha- what do you think about having, um? A joint meeting with select board and planning board? On the first to interview at-large members?
Um. That's a possibility. Um. Let's see, our next meeting is Monday, so yep, I can bring it up to the board on the, on Monday and get back to you. Is that, and I?
That'd be great.
So I guess the alternative be.
What about the fifteenth, is, uh, well?
Well, or the eighth.
Or the eighth, or meeting on the eighth.
I mean, you're still looking to. Get candidates, correct?
We do, we have some already, um, people who are interested, we can do another.
Another push.
Yeah.
And 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 the first is still three weeks away.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Two weeks?
Two.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Okay, so that's, that's, yeah. All right, so we could, we can, if you want to talk with the board. And see if they have a preference for, uh.
First or the eighth?
Correct.
So does the eighth work for majority of you?
Well, that's assuming, yeah.
Yes.
John, are you?
I'll, I'll, I can make my schedule a bit.
Anne, are you around?
I don't have a schedule.
I'm not sure I can zoom in, I. Right, timing difference is gonna be five hours difference, I'm gonna say, or six. Um, if we go the eight.
Lot of math.
I know, my head's a real step. All right, so we will put to the first or the eighth. The task force, um, the MBTA zoning task force appointments, correct? Okay, uh, next up, early voting discussion. Everybody have an opportunity to read this over. Um. The bottom, the, the question is, do we want to have early voting in person for this upcoming election? Or go ahead and leave it at the, um. Absentee ballot? Which is.
I thought that, I thought it had missed the cutoff.
So, so you.
That's a.
Holding my, that is. You will have voted by now, because you missed the cutoff.
That, right, for.
Which I would do anyway.
So it's basically means you have absentee for, for anybody and everybody, you don't have to qualify. Which is a pretty loose qualification anyways.
Whatever your problem is, it is. Okay.
So, yeah, the question is, do you want to, in addition to that? Do you feel it's appropriate to have at least some, some hours for in-person early voting?
And the board of registrars voted not to opt for that. Um, the question that Kathy had, and we were unable to get an answer to, is how many people? Are being precluded by our not doing?
Yeah.
There's a memo.
There's a memo.
There was a memo, but she didn't. She couldn't break that one number out.
Right, well, we had twelve, like, they're in a panda, and it's, you know, this is pan- these are pandemic numbers in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, so. I was hoping we would get some numbers from last year, which is very robust. Voting period for us, it's a shame we don't have that. Is it, I guess, I'm. Is there any reason why we can't have it and then track how many people actually show up? And get data, and then we decide it's not worth it, we don't do it again next year, but I just feel odd. Getting back on the opportunities to vote when we don't have the data.
I, I agree.
I'm just not.
John?
Uh, I would agree, I also wonder if the registrars asked this question.
I, 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 I'm not sure they did, based on the fact that they were not in favor of mail-in voting.
This is just money, I think, I got the impression that it was. Time, time is money.
Time and underutilization.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Underutilized.
Or at least. Or at least they thought it was underutilized, because we really don't know what that number is. Okay.
So I don't think you have to have it, you know, ten-hour days for, for two weeks, I mean, I don't think you could be selective.
Selective and just give people who are busy or, you know, after work, you know, something that we give people an opportunity to.
We're talking about hours outside of the hours that the office is normally open?
On Saturday?
That was, wasn't Saturday an option?
No, I thought Saturday was the most. Yeah. So.
So in other words, it would be open on Saturdays, early voting, I don't know, what is this, like, two or three Saturdays?
Well, that would be a decision that. What days would it be open just up there?
Or we just, you know, they can set up the early voting as they do right in the entry.
Yeah.
Oh, it's right there.
Thursday night.
I would think a couple of evenings and, um, some hours on Saturday would make it easier for people who commute to work.
You track it.
And then if it shows up, we know it's not needed, right, you know?
So do we, we need to?
Yeah, I guess if I suggest you, with those parameters, I asked Diane to propose, propose something, and then you finalize that in your next meeting.
I, I, I do think that we'd be better off having more information before we limit options.
But thinking of a couple of evenings, a Saturday, and maybe a Sunday.
Looking two evenings on Saturday.
Yeah, that's, that should be plenty.
Ron, that's.
Oh, yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I, I leave it up to Diane, it's common sense there.
Okay. Are we ready to go to consent agenda? Right, um. Anything that someone wants to pull out from consent agenda? All right, oh, just, I. I have to recuse myself from the okay, one of the meetings, and this is what I sent to Debbie.
It'll be March twentieth, you're in, since.
Okay.
According to the meeting.
Yeah, so, and I, I sent to minimize again. The changes.
On the, on the February ninth, on the first page, talking with a harbor master, and it says, Mr. Cedarsfield recommends that the SRO officer serve full time with a harbor master, and it's not exactly what they meant. And, and.
In the summer.
No, but it's not, it's not the SRO officer. It's that slot. And, and other than that, I'm.
Okay, um.
We need to pull out March twenty?
No, I, I will, in addition, I'll just.
We can't vote.
Myself from that, so I will vote on everything except a March twenty minutes. No, well, let's see, move to accept the minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Probably March ends, the February.
You want to.
I was asking if we wanted to.
Yeah, just pull out March twenty, and vote.
Withdraw my motion, and move to approve the minutes of February ninth, March sixth, and March sixth, have a whole consent agenda, and the rest for the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded John Round, roll call vote, John Round.
Yes.
Brian Salz.
Yes.
Kathy Blata.
Yes.
Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Uh, move to approve the minutes of March twentieth.
Second.
Move by Ann Harrison, seconded Kathy Blata, roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Blata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
And Becky Jake does not bet on that.
All right, could, could we just agree that, um, Dawn Howland should get?
There, there is, he'll, he'll be attending the next meeting.
Name it, okay, fine. We all agree with that.
Yes. Okay, county minister's report.
I, I, I'll keep it very brief tonight, I'm honestly the work on School Street, because I'm going. Um, it was fairly large construction project, it's, uh.
The everyday?
Yes.
Yes, that was in the consent agenda. I'm sorry, you've been sitting here waiting for us to.
Yes.
She has a full speech.
You're standing here forever.
No.
Well, I did send a minimal change, did you see that? Okay, okay. Um, yes, and.
Okay, you don't have to, I just, I did like five seconds. On behalf of the friend, uh, the Friends of Manchester Trees, we thank the board, and you're very busy, a long evening, for consent, for this consent and proclamation. It will be read at planting at Memorial School, morning of April twenty-eighth, we plant a new American elm down by the tennis courts. Again, thank you very much for doing.
And I will be there to make presentation of the proclamation.
My name is Jody Morse.
And any other board members who wish to attend. Attend, that would be wonderful.
Great scene, sure.
Yes. Thank you, I'm sorry, Jody. And Jody is our new head of Friends of Tree.
Oh, yes, friend, the new head.
I'm the president.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye, Gar.
Bye. Thanks.
Okay. Chair report.
I've just mentioned the, the, obviously, the construction on, on the School Street was ongoing. Um, it's, it's a pretty major project in terms of resetting all the curbing, um, replacing the sidewalks and repaving the road itself. Um, so it'll continue on for three, three, four more weeks. Um, should be done, uh, by third week of May, at the latest. And, uh, yeah, if people can avoid it, that's, that's the recommendation, there'll be, uh, continual detours over the next few weeks. It's progressing well, you know, uh, it's, uh, total cost is a million dollars. Et cetera, uh, but, uh, EPW was able to bring together the necessary dollars to make it happen, so. It'll be a significant improvement when it's done, so, sewer, sewer pipe done, water pipe done, and now new sidewalks and now new road, so.
Are they doing granite edging all along there?
Not all along, just because of the price, it's, it's like, uh, it's more than ten times the cost for, for granite, and the, the new granite wouldn't match the old granite.
Yeah.
What about the asphalt versus, um, concrete?
Yeah, they've got cement, oh.
Can I get a plow go by asphalt?
Like the, the sidewalks that are asphalt, they don't seem to have a very long life.
Right, again, it's a function of cost.
Total cost of ownership, so what's the useful life of a concrete sidewalk versus an asphalt, because the Pi, Pi Street was done not that long ago? And.
Yep.
They're a mess.
Well, and also with the concrete, you can't do those, you can do those in paths.
Exactly.
Them up, but I.
They did over here, it was all make believe.
But I also think that, that concrete curbing it makes a better definition between the sidewalk and the road.
Right.
And I, I just have concerns about, um, the, the. Say it again?
Well, it isn't, at this point, it's already been blown out, hasn't it?
Going forward.
Yeah. School streets.
I know, it's. We have concrete, um, the concrete curves anywhere in town?
Hard for us to think that we do, I can.
In my former community, there was a lot of that.
Yeah.
And, and the machine just goes right up.
Yeah.
Where's the concrete? I'm just curious, because it looked like, from a distance, it looks like granite.
So is this a topic that we could talk about at a later date?
Yeah.
Either as part of our capital planning or whatever, but it, it really feels like we're not looking at total cost of ownership. And if there's one thing, I get a lot of complaints about when my neighbors come and talk to me when I'm on a walk, it's the sidewalks.
Yeah.
They're not in good shape, and we're, it feels like we're wasting money.
Well, they are on a, um, on a cyclic repair, but if we.
But they don't last long enough to make it to the next.
So that, that's a discussion we need to have with Chuck.
So could we've taken action to put that on, um, on the agenda?
Okay, what do you want that action called?
So, um, sidewalk, sidewalk comparison of options.
Sidewalks and curves.
And curves, sidewalk and curves option, that's good.
Okay, um, Chuck will be coming on the fifteenth for the Water Resource Protection Task Force. Do we want to try to get information for the fifteenth as well? For that?
I would expect you would already have it if they made a decision, I want to use, and that would be great, I think.
All right, so, um, Debbie, you've got that action item on, Greg, you'll be able to ask, talk about that? Okay, um, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to adjourn the open meeting and not to return to open meeting for the purpose of executive second per master law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
So.
Okay, who seconded? Uh, Dan Harrison, seconded Brian Solacy, roll call vote.
Yes, yes.
Brian Sol, Kathy Blata, and Harrison, yes, and Becky Jake says yes. Thank you all very much for attending this evening, and, um, we can stop the recording. All right, um.